Your life.
Thank you, appreciate it. Hey, Council, I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting from May 11th, 2023 to order with adoption of the agenda as amended. I want to move 10 A to 8 A, so we're going to move the fire department quarterly report to the first item. That way, we're not holding up our fire chief. So if someone wants to second that motion, please. Council Chair, all in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Going on to adoption of the minutes from Committee of the Hall for April 13th, someone want to make that motion? Councilor Lusau, seconded by Council Chair, all in favor? Motion's carried, any business arising from those minutes? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to 8 A, we'll move that. Get Chief De Rosi to do his presentation on his quarterly report. So Chief, we'll leave it up to you and Ms. Russo can show the screen or you're going to show the screen or however you want to do it.
I think, is this on the plug-in?
Yep.
Amazing, perfect. My first attempt at work and here.
First try. Okay, so thank you for the offer to bring me up a little sooner, let's appreciate that. Pleased to present my first quarter detailed report, Council, for 2023. I just wanted to go through this couple of things and highlight anything that might be of interest. Starting with the Fire Prevention Inspection Division. One thing to note there is that we were able to achieve 100% of our intended inspections. And her number is, I believe it's 149. On the right-hand side there is. Doing well on inspections. Now, fire investigations, we don't have numbers for the losses right at the moment, we're still waiting for the fire insurance companies to provide more detailed information on that. We've had a number of fire and life safety, public education presentations, mostly to kids. But we have done some municipal building, fire alarms and evacuation drills on that. All right. Okay, so fire suppression division, this is our target time response times. Not much different than previously reported for the 2022 annual report. We're still working on getting those closer to the numbers that we'd like to see. On the right-hand side here, you can see the yellow is our numbers. And the orange is the target number for getting that first two apparatus on scene. Incidents, oops. It doesn't like when I click, okay. Incidents by type and location and incident distribution. I'd just like to make a correction to the Revelstoke numbers, there should be 77, there should be actually three residential structure fires in there. Which were two chimney fires and a possible structure fire, which turned out to be a barbecue on a deck. Was called in, the smoke coming from the, from the eaves, so called in as an actual type, maybe different. So there's just a little error in that.
Was it an actual fire in the barbecue or just somebody to know how to cook?
I guess they like charred roast steak. So just on the distribution there, you can see the most of the calls, 72% are in fact in Revelstoke. 23% are, are, are calls are road rescue and 5% are in area B, fire protection area. Call volume by day of the week, there's been a change to the call volume by day a week from the annual stats. Which we saw Wednesday had a peak on it as well, and that peak has now fixed to Monday. So it'll be very interesting to see how that, those peaks and valleys settle down over the year. The training division. Oh, did it again. There we go. Clicking the wrong button. Training division has been quite busy, since the snow was melted, we've gotten back into our wildfire training as well. A couple of things that we've done, interestingly, or not interestingly, for myself, helicopter landing zones. So those are where we might be off by a PC ambulance to set up an LZ on the highway or in a field or something, if there's a vehicle accident. Sometimes we'll get them here in town as well, they'll ask for assistance for an LZ. So we got to train on not to make sure that we're doing it right, because the helicopters coming in and they're, they're, they want to be fast too.
Yeah.
A volunteer firefighter recruit my attention. We started the year with 26 and we've lost four already. I could tell you that we've already lost an additional one since this report was written as well. That is 15% decline, so I'm going to replace those four right away, I've done some interviews. And we're intending to onboard four new recruits. Right away, put them through a bit of a boot camp to bring our numbers back.
So Chief, why are they leaving, are they leaving town or just losing personnel?
Losing town, losing interest, I don't think either one of those is prevalent, actually, I think it's a, it's a matter of opportunity. We've got one fellow who's still living in town, but he's taking full-time work in Salmonarm. Another kind of guy has left, he's moved to take full-time work in Belmont. And then we've got one, another one, yeah, so it's not anything specific, but I think it's more opportunities.
Sure.
More than anything. We haven't had any leave for loss of interest specifically, not that I'm aware of.
Alright, thank you.
In those numbers, second from last line, volunteer membership is below the minimum target of 24. So the minimum target of 24 is that we expect 15, 50% of our volunteers to show up, so that would give us 12 volunteers. Plus our career staff, give us the 17 that we need for that structure car. So that's where we're looking at those numbers there. Because we have such a high rate of turnover, our current membership is 82% with less than five years' experience. So we're trying to get those numbers up again. We had a number of city staff completed their emergency operations center essential training. So that's great to see there, we've got two staff have completed their ICS level 300. And one has completed their level 200. So that's good, improves our capacity with the emergency program, should anything significant come to the city. Doing quite well for injury and sickness, we don't have any, anything significant there to report, so that's pretty standard there, no concerns on that. The firefighting fleet operational readiness, we had ladder six was out of service for 58.5 hours in the third, first quarter. There are more hours, but they're going to fall over into the second quarter. That was a failure of a couple of hydraulic lines that control the platform. And they have failed, or were about to fail. So we had to take the truck to the service to get those replaced, and that took quite a bit of time.
Okay, Council's taken your share.
Quick question on that 58.5 out of service hours, is that like consecutive hours or is that like workshop hours, can you define that a little bit more for us?
So that would be consecutive hours.
Okay.
So once those hydraulic lines were deemed to be unsafe to operate the platform. The truck was kept in operation until the truck was taken out of service to get repairs.
Okay.
So just, there were some complications with the repairs, we're not able to get the parts in town. It was three pieces of hydraulic line, like four pieces of hydraulic line to each. One set was 70 something feet long and it's non-conductive. So we had to get those from out of town, but there was a problem with those, we actually had to. And child passenger seats, safety seats, we're trying to wrap up a little bit on the child passenger safety seat, so I'm just going to take this opportunity to inform everybody that the significant cause of children between ages one and nine is improper use of car seats. So 81% for car seats and 50% for booster seats. So Revelstoke Fire Department will check your, your child's car seat and booster seat, to make sure that it's installed properly. So that your child has the best chance of surviving an accident if you do get anyone. It's free, free of cost, no charge, just make an appointment at the fire department, come on down. We did one in the first quarter, we'd like to boost that number.
Sure. Council Stake Nurse.
Um, yeah, just a suggestion, I was wondering if we could maybe run that through the city communications and have that in the, in the next newsletter. So that way it gets out to the public.
That would be a great suggestion, appreciate that.
Mr. Palmer, you have a question?
No, no, it's good, thanks.
Great, and Councilor Alena?
I just, just to follow up and not comment, all senior staff, including the chief, are able to access the to submit to the newsletter automatically, so anytime any department wants to include information on that, it's available to you.
So we have to need a reminder to tell them to do that. And if there's no further questions, if I may, your worship. There's an opportunity on June 3rd, so the, second Friday. Late in the morning, just before lunch, one of the vendors is heading down to Penitentum for the Fire Chiefs Conference. And they bring in electric fire apparatus through town. They've offered to stop here in Revelstoke to let our firefighters get a handle, get their hands on it and to experience it in the future. So I'd like to invite Council, if any of Council is interested, Friday, June 2nd, 11 a.m.
All right.
Stop by the fire hall and see what it is.
All right. Councilor Palmer, you have a question?
Uh, yeah, thank you for the report. Question on, so I noticed that the streams, some streams are already drying up, that are normally still flowing pretty good, or so it's, I wonder if it's getting dry out there. Do you do a joint training with wild, with wildfire services or? Much or, how does that?
Not as much as we'd like to. So obviously, there's been some challenges with, starting with the pandemic in 2020. And one of the things we'd like to do is, is see an improvement in that. The challenge for us is, we were going to do some training with wildfire. And now they're busy. There's a bunch of courses they were putting on, firebox courses that have been canceled because now they're, they're too busy with what's going on.
Yeah, yeah.
It's really challenging to get a really good environment where we can actually learn something and work together.
Yeah, got you, right. Then, so the wildfire services, so they're putting in a new building, it sounds like a pretty big building down by the airport there. Yeah, I'm just, you know, I was just thinking after Tuesday's council meeting. You know, the whole conversation about second fire hall and all those kind of things, so. Just, they're just some of the thoughts, of course, our emergency services operation center is down in that area and I was just wondering if there was synergies, and so it's not really a question, these are just things I was thinking about. I'm not sure how much it sort of hits the radar, whether there's any synergies or if it really needs to be two separate entities. I'm not really looking for an answer, but that's just, I was thinking about, okay, we got more water going down there soon and more facilities and that's good and. Yeah, so that's just, yeah, just a general comment, I guess.
I think there are certainly some synergies and opportunities. And one of the things that I'm really looking forward to is having access to appropriate water flows. Should anything happen on the airstrip itself, as well, we, we, now we would have access to significant water rapidly for the airport. That certainly would be a benefit.
Council Stake Nurse.
Just on that note about the airport. I've, I've never taken any kind of airplane firefighting rescue courses, any of that, it's a whole different kind of subtopic in itself. But my understanding is that it's all kind of, like, one, a special PPE because of the, the temperatures and then two, it's, it's like a special form that you're using for, for putting out the, the jet fuel fires. So yeah, just kind of wondering about like the, you know, if we're going to expand that, you know, like firefighting capabilities down at the airport. And then I guess those would be two kind of considerations that I've been looking at for, for, you know, mitigating those types of incidents.
Yeah. Follow-up comment, there is, you know, our service levels document, our policy. We have stated that fire, firefighting efforts for aircraft crash will be based on structural tactics at this time. So unless things change at the airport, we'll be continuing to use structural tactics, equipment and supplies, so your, your average Class 8 foam.
Okay. All right, thank you, appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments from Chief, for Chief De Rosi? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Appreciate it, alright. Okay, Council, let's move on to draft Council Code of Responsible Conduct policies, C1. Ms. Ford, you have a presentation.
Thank you, your worship. So, um, this report is in follow-up to our March 14th meeting, where we brought forward a request for Council to consider putting in a code of conduct. And Council made the recommendation to, that a code of conduct be drafted. And that the working group be established with Counselors Stapenhurst, Devlin and Mayor Salz. So after that, I went back to not to the drawing board necessarily, but I'll give you a little bit of background here, so on March 14th, we no, I already did that, sorry. In that March 14th Council report, there was a link to forging the path to responsible conduct. And from what I understand, Council may not have seen that link as during the Respectful Workplace training this week that Council participated in. Council wasn't familiar with that, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention again, and it, I did hand it out, so you guys have copies of it. So I did a matrix that I shared with the working group, where I compared Abbotsford, Kamloops, Maple Ridge, Salmonarm and Surrey. And there, either they had code of conduct policies or bylaws, most of them were pretty consistent across the board. In terms of the content, and most of them were created based on the foundations, foundational principles of responsible conduct, including integrity, respect, accountability, leadership and collaboration. So now I would like to sit down with you guys, is there anything that you would like to add to that list of principles? Or do you think this is sufficient and it covers basically what you want to see in the code of conduct?
Comment from anyone?
Councilor Alena? Nice question, so before us, we have a draft policy, and I was just wondering if, if I was to say I wanted point number five, how would that be?
I, I could amend that draft policy to include whatever you, you wish to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm just going to go through the components of the policy and at any time, if you would like to see something additional or something removed, please speak up.
Okay.
And so, in the foundational principles, there are definitions for each of the principles. Pretty common sense conduct, like for integrity, conduct under this principle upholds the public interest, is truthful. Respect is demonstrated when a member fosters a great environment of trust in demonstrating due regard to perspectives. Accountability, conduct under this principle is demonstrated when Council members individually and collectively accept responsibility. And then the leadership and collaboration conduct under this principle is demonstrated when members encourage individuals to work together in the pursuit of collective objectives. So in the policy that has been presented for you, there are a number, under each of these categories, there are a number of specifics on how you can achieve each of these principles. The next section in the policy that's proposed is general conduct, again, it refers back to this government document that was created by the working group. And then an important one is the rules and responsibilities, Council is a governing body of the City of Revelstoke and is responsible stuck. For governing the city in accordance with the Community Charter and Local Government Act and any other legislation. And the mayor is statutorily responsible for providing leadership to Council and directing the CAO. So again, if you have any comments about any of these things, please speak up and I can amend the policy. Interactions with staff, this is an interesting one, and for the most part, all of the communities that I did the comparison with, they all have that Council should direct all of the inquiries to the CAO or the director of the departments rather than staff. And then it gets filtered out that way, just to ensure that all of Council knows what's happening. And are all on the same page and receive the same information, so that when you make decisions, it can be unified.
Council Chair.
Just. Thanks, just a question on that one. For planning, so our planning development, who would we be, we have a director there, unless we go through Mr. Black?
I, I believe it would be Mr. Black and Paul Simon, you could include both of them.
Thanks.
Because Paul is acting on in that regard, yes.
Council Palmer, did you have a?
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's an interesting thing, so on the, on inquiries, so basically, so if we have an inquiry, say engineering or planning, send something to Simon, CC all of Council on the inquiry or not? Or just, so just, that, that gets, that doesn't, this doesn't address that.
This does not address that.
So that's just discretion by the individual, so I'll give a real example. So I was approached by a constituent yesterday regarding what I perceive to be a planning issue, so, but I don't think it's of general interest, but that's a discretionary kind of a call, so. Do I send that out, so I guess that just remains discretionary, so specifically what, what it is, just as an example. Don't need to drill into this issue, but if someone wants to inquire about installing one of those neighborhood library or book exchange things. And I think, okay, that's just email clutter if I was to CC to everybody kind of thing, but that's discretionary, because somebody might think otherwise.
It is, yes, and staff are going to work on internal policies on how communications and correspondence is disseminated through the Council. We're going to try to make sure it's consistent through every department and each of you.
Right.
And so, so right now, what happens is you may send your inquiry, if that particular staff member feels that it should go all, the response should go to all the Council. They'll send that out, and in this particular case, it might not have anything to do with the rest of Council, and they might say, go tell your constituents, come see us and you know, we'll put this through or whatever the case may be.
Yeah, exactly, like in this case, and I think it's appropriate that Council, maybe I'm drilling, going off topic slightly, but I always say, go see staff, this is the appropriate staff. However, sometimes they want this dealer put out, and that's kind of what I said, well, I'll check, I'll check with the planning department. Because they think it's going to be really easy, sort of thing, well, maybe not so easy and frustrating, but yeah, okay, that's, that's good, thanks.
Councilor Alena?
I just, I mean, I, I welcome comment on this, this is just a general comment on my understanding of how things work. Like you're not meant to be by email lobbying all of Council in one email for something, so if we've got an agenda item and I want it to do all this, but I can't email everyone. It's okay if I email everyone individually and say, this is an individual conversation, I want you to support, here's what I'm thinking, but as a group, so. I, I know I had a bit of a concern once, and it's good to hear that the, the procedure is going to be tightened up, because like I, I emailed something to Evan and then it sent everyone. You know, like, it's not me sending it, but I'm just, it was just one of those things, so it'd be great to see that procedure, and the other thing, I, I did email Evan and staff the other day, just hoping we can tighten out the email procedure when somebody emails Council and staff for something that's kind of Council, kind of staff, kind of thing, as far as I know, it's just one, anyways, it's off topic a bit.
Just, thanks, just elaborate on that. Are you saying it's okay to email specific counselors?
You could lobby individual counselors for for any one, for any one issue, yeah, so if I want to go talk to one person individually, then, then that's okay as far as I understand it goes, yeah.
And the, and the basis.
We don't want to be perceived to be deciding by email, you know?
Yeah, so it's avoiding eating by email.
So a follow-up, Council Chair, Alena?
Yeah, just for clarification on the example of the community library, there's really, I, I don't see why that's a council issue, I mean, that's just in something like that, wouldn't you just say, you know, go talk to this department? And the reason I'm asking that is, I get asked all the time at dose about zoning setback related questions in relation to secondary suites, carriage suites. And I say, across the street is all the answers.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
I've walked, I've walked people across the street last week.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, and in our approach on, on that, I think absolutely, it's always best for people on these inquiries to just go to City Hall. And, and I agree that we should direct them, sometimes in, like in this particular case. You know, they're, they're thinking it's going to be simple and, and maybe it will be simple, and, but they, they don't want they don't feel comfortable going down to City Hall and being thrown a big, huge bureaucratic process, so they just want a sense of that. But I'll, so I said, I'll get a sense of it, but I said, I'm not the expert, and I need to talk to Paul Simon. And that's the best place to go.
The reason I bring this up is, as counselors, we are individually liable, what we tell people, if we give them the wrong information. We are liable individually. So consider that before expecting yourself to know everything about every procedure and every bylaw. Send them to City Hall. If they're fearful or they're a little bit nervous, I get it, there's, there's no barriers in there.
Yeah. I had an inquiry yesterday, real early in the morning, somebody calling me and saying, oh, I've misplaced this director's phone, cell phone number, can you give that to me? And I'm going, no, I can't, here's the office number and somebody will be there at 8:30 to receive your call. And then, two hours later, they called, and the same person called me back and said, this is my issue. So who do I talk to, because, you know, I want to kind of, and this was their words, kind of grease the wheels so I can get my project to go through. And they said, well, very poor choice of words, but as I mentioned two hours ago, if you follow up with this person, they'll be able to help you with the procedures that you have to go through. And that basically is, but that's kind of what we're going to be receiving or are already receiving individually.
It's just having a panic attack, we're in this.
Okay, so then the next component of the policy is the collection and handling of information, so the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. If you have any questions or concerns about information you're sharing, please reach out to Corporate Services and we can help guide you through that. There's also, in the policy itself, it kind of explains what to do. And then conflicts of interest, Council's decisions are expected to benefit the community as a whole and should not come with any actual or perceived personal benefit. So you recruit, recuse yourself in that sense.
I had an inquiry on that section, it's all good, there's nothing wrong with it. At the same time, it's redundant what's already there, and, and one of the things I note on these policy documents, when they get really kind of unwieldy. Then they're really hard to refer to, because this, this is covered, so I, I, I'm not suggesting it needs to be stripped, but I do question the need of those, especially so many, so many words, even though it's not that much. I noticed that in some of our other policies, it's basically verbatim of, of the Community Charter and those kind of, and then say, well, why are we sort of doing this duplication? So it's just, I guess, a perspective on that.
Right, and I, I think, sorry, Council Palmer, I think that the, it's like a description following the legislation to explain it, but I'm completely happy to take those last two paragraphs out, if you guys think it would be cleaner and easier to understand.
Yeah, it's minor, but.
Council Chair.
Thanks, thanks for worship, personally, I'd like to. Thanks, thanks for worship, personally, I'd like to keep it in there, I mean, the Community Charter is huge. It's very difficult to find things, especially quickly, this is a ten page document, love that it's there. Whether it's redundant or not, I think it's awesome.
Is there a liability issue as far as if we didn't have it in there, that sort of thing down the road?
No, there is no, there are no real rules on what's contained in the contract. The only legislation is that council needs to consider a code of conduct.
All right, good, thank you for that.
So I just included that because of the five other committees that I looked at, they all included it.
Counselor.
I was wondering if we could go back to the previous slide, and my question is about the very last sentence there. Personal benefit, including benefits for family or friends. It's my recollection that conflict, the wording such as in the Community Charter and subsequent legal interpretations of that is a bit more restrictive, so for example, I don't know that friends is, is considered in there, I could be wrong technically in a legal sense. And family, I think, is defined a bit more, has been defined in the courts more specifically, such as, you know, somebody you cohabitate with. Or have some sort of a financial connection with, so maybe it doesn't include your, your, you know, cousin or brother or uncle, so I'm seeking clarity on whether this is a more expansive policy. And just to give a, a personal perspective, I try to be a stickler as much as possible to these. So if I, you know, if I go, oh, that guy's kind of my friend, you know, I know him from the hockey team or the, you know, whatever, the club. And then I'm going to be, I think, I think that that may have a fund, may alter fundamentally what is in the Community Charter, so I'm seeking some thoughts on this side of it.
Counselor Orlando, so it, it was an expansion on the legislation. Again, we can take or leave that, it's more the, the optics. That if you have a friend that's lobbying for a certain application, do you want to be one to, to make a, make that decision or to participate in that decision?
Yeah, I think, I mean, you know, no, obviously, if it's my good buddy who's, you know, trying to get something that has a material benefit, but what if it's you know, my friends are on the softball team and they're applying for a grant for new bases for the, the field, and then if I'm trying to apply the letter of the law, does that mean I'm not going to participate in what I think has no conflict in terms of benefits to me or real material things, so my concern is that it's just expanding, I'm trying to follow the rules, so whatever rules we set. So my concern is it's really broadening things a whole lot and it, and it puts people into more gray areas as well as potential for, you know, some sort of, you know, legal challenge because it's more expansive than what has already been decided before.
So that last five, six words, including benefits for family or friends, could be altered to be more prescriptive and restrictive based on what the, like explanation states, so personal benefit, you know, like you mentioned, cohabitation with someone or a personal business, let's say I have a business that includes a family member or, or whatever, that might be more restrictive into this, but what you just basically talked about, someone on the ball team getting something bases or whatever for, that's to the benefit of the community, not for the personal benefit, so, you know, it's, it's going to be a bit of a, a gray area with that sort of thing, but if you're concerned about this, then the, the basic thing should be, we take out those last six words or alter those, and I, and so what do you guys feel regarding that, Counselor Palmer?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Solis, and thank you, Counselor Orlando, on the dialogue, because it's an interesting discussion that's been around for a very, very long time, and so as an example, I'll use a very real, real example, so when David Ragan was mayor, he declared conflict of interest with a major developer in town based on this friendship kind of thing, it wasn't a real friendship though, it was, it was interaction, so it's kind of like you and Mayor Solis interacting with R M R, is that a friendship, and, and so it's, it's an interesting thing, and then by expanding your, you're focusing on the last five words, but even the, the word or perceived, and its idea of or perceived, well, what is meant by perceived in the eyes of whom? And so that's, I, I guess I start to sort of wonder whether this policy, going back to my earlier statement, whether we want to become more restrictive as far as conflict of interest than what is already out there, which is fairly restrictive already. And even if we have this policy, what is the obligation on an individual council, so someone else might have a perception of a conflict of interest. And, and, you know, I'll go back to this library thing, you know, is that a conflict of interest, this is a friend. And so the, and so, and we have people that are coming to us, so I, I, I wonder if we're best just keeping to the first paragraph. Essentially, anyway, I, we'll sort of see where it goes, but, you know, third, but I, I, I wonder if this might be weaponized in the future. Because of the interpretation.
Counselor.
Could the definition refer to existing legislation is my question, so perceived personal benefit according to the charter and whatever, as defined in the charter or whatever?
Yes, Counselor Orlando, so the, the first paragraph of the actual policy is the Community Charter addresses conflict of interest in sections one hundred, one hundred and one and one hundred and four. The interpretation of these sections is a matter for the courts, however, this documents provide, provides additional guidance.
Okay.
So I'm happy to remove those last two paragraphs and the additional guidance statement if.
Counselor State first.
I think, I think to what Ms. Floyd says, but striking the, the last sentence in the last two paragraphs, then that carries a lot of weight, because the other thing that kind of, I don't know if this is a possibility, but if the Community Charter changes, I'd rather have it written that we're following the Community Charter, if that changes, we're still following it, as opposed to having a policy that's very descriptive, that doesn't necessarily change with other changes, if that makes sense.
So, do we want to alter this now, just to deal correctly with this? Can we be, you know, basically, as you said, that we're following the Community Charter and reword that, and then we can have another look at that? Is that possible?
Yeah.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, all right, but you okay with moving on?
All right, so use of social media was an interesting one, when I did the review, I limited it to to what I thought was relevant in that the, the three items or the three points that are written on the presentation, refrain from speaking on behalf of the city or council unless expressly authorized to do so. So that would be on behalf of you as a whole. The next statement is qualify any, qualify any subjective content shared on social media with statements such as, in my opinion. Just so that anybody reading your posts on social media don't think it's a collective opinion of all of council. And then obviously, members are responsible for the integrity of their posts, which.
Any comments from any of your counselors?
Yeah, just, I mean, I think part of this could, could, you know, you could easily put it in your bio that, you know, the opinions expressed on this page do not reflect that of the city, they're merely my personal reflections and are not to be interpreted as being spoken, you know, so it's just kind of like one of those.
Absolutely.
You know, and that's, you know, I guess it's kind of, you know, puts, it's kind of like the disclaimer statement. But I don't know if that necessarily addresses any concerns that people have in regards to how they're using social media or what they're posting on it, so that's just my, my two thoughts.
Your colleague, Counselor Chair.
Thanks, worship. This actually terrifies me, I'll speak for somebody who may not be here as well, who needs to read this. Yeah. Thanks for that addition. I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold my tongue for a second.
Oh, I'm wanting to hear it.
It'll come back, don't worry.
I think, I think we have, I think we unfortunately had some terrible examples of how this can go wrong with previous council. Although it did a really good job of gaining communication and the word, Ed, what's happening in council to the, to the community, a lot of the posts, you know, spiraled downhill pretty quick, and, and we did have a council member quit before, so.
Yeah. We'll go into that zone, but the, so I, I, I kind of like how it's written personally. Because there, there is a political component here, so if, if we decide to be active on social media, so you're somewhat active and Counselor Dedland's active and expresses opinions from time to time, and I think it's pretty clear to me anyway that it's opinion, but this would provide clarity as to making sure there's no confusion, this in my opinion. It's, it's an interesting thing, like the main reason, I, I contemplate going, giving opinions very frequently, I contemplate it very frequently. I, I don't, because it's this hole that you go down into and you gotta, it consumes like eight or sixteen hours of work as soon as you, you know, provide that, and so that's just a decision from an individual counselor if you want to get into the community debate. So, and it can, it can be a big issue, like say if we, if it had opinions on, on arena replacement, I do have opinions, but if I'm going to go into that realm, that may lack wisdom. That's nothing else, but can you curtail the individual sort of political perspective that somebody might have?
Just a follow up on that, my opinion about the arena that I wrote down months ago came back to me in the gym today.
Yeah, yeah, it's there forever.
Yeah, I was reminded that I need to soften my language when talking to the public, just, just as clarification, everything done prior to this, big about this. Okay.
Still stands, but you, you can't be held, you know, you can't be, you can't be held in fire, is that correct?
No, and the intent of this section is mostly to be respectful.
So I go to Counselor Orlando, you had your hand up, Counselor State.
Worship, thank you, my input is, yeah, I don't mind the intent of this, but I would prefer to see wording that conforms a bit more to reality and, and that is two points. Like saying, in my opinion is fine, but often the realities you get, for example, on social media, you can get into an ongoing conversation, you can't on every thing go, in my opinion, so there's a bit of flexibility, and then the second part, it says to ensure that there is no confusion between the city, you can never know what other people are confused about, you know, we still know that a lot of people, for, for, for a significant proportion of people, there, there is no distinction between the city workouts. So, and, yeah, so maybe just word it a little differently to try to prevent confusion or something like that, yeah, yeah.
Counselor State first.
Yeah, just to, just to follow up to what Counselor Cherry was saying about expressing their opinions on social media. It can be, I think it can be like a slippery slope, especially when we're supposed to be coming into the table with kind of like an open mindset, if, if, you know, if I was to arbitrarily like take an example, just, you know, say for example, I sell a lot in downtown, you know, like, well, I'm, you know, I'm dead against, you know, any kind of commercial entities coming downtown. Well, I'm not really coming to the table with an open discussion, like if I share that on social media, it's showing right there. You know, and then if it doesn't go to their boat, then, you know, your liability, your, you know, and I think the integrity of, of council is kind of jeopardized at that point, so it's, it's a little bit of a slippery slope and I can understand like, you know, I think it's just, you know, maybe there needs to be more social media awareness training and how, you know, like the pitfalls that they can get you.
Well, I think, so when we were down at L G L A and Jen, you know, did that little hour thing, it was, some of you came away going like holy crap, and some of us looked at it and go, yeah, okay, that makes sense, so, and, and I think we all said, okay, that makes sense. So it's always going to be objective, and you know, as Counselor Orlando has just indicated, you know, people may get confused and, and, and there's no, for most people, there's no definition between your personal life now and your council life, so, and it's how we approach that, Counselor Palmer, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, it's, it's a good discussion that, you know, where this comes, I think we'll just continue, you know, talking about the slippery slope. Living in the age of social media is a slippery slope. That, in the confusion, I think, Counselor Orlando, you're absolutely right, there is, you know, even when there's debate that's happening, I think those that are on, on there saying, you know, I've done, certainly done it, saying, make sure you put your comments on Talk Rebel Stope, but people don't, they continue and think they're being heard because of the dialogue, and that's where the bulk of that, and I think that's an interesting thing, because as an individual counselor, when I see that debate, even though it's not going on the official platform, I think it's relevant. Even though it hasn't gone, because it is, it is a big part of the community. Just another sort of point, though, just thinking a, a little bit is that the component, social media should not be used for the purpose, includes the distribution, distribution, and your points, they're all relevant. They're, they're all basically covered under other legislation, and it's probably a good thing to have in here as a reminder. Because if you do any of these things, you, you may be subject to prosecution in the, in the future with, with or without this policy, you can't do these things, you can't do disparaging comments or slander. So promotion of illegal activity, that's, and so probably.
So basically, what's here now, one or two small changes that you've already recorded, are you as a council okay to move on? You okay with, you know, okay, all right, interactions, you want to discuss this?
So interactions with the public and media, this statement is pretty consistent throughout all of the bylaws and policies that I reviewed, regardless of whether members agree with the decision of council, they will act respectfully and communicate accurately when discussing the decision with the public and or media. So it is a council decision, not an individual council decision, is the premise.
Can you, can you elaborate on what exactly you're, you're implying with that statement, like, let me, let me rephrase that statement, so if for example, I didn't agree with the council's decision, it's perfectly okay for me to go to the media and say, council decided on this as council, I may not be, I didn't vote in favor of it for these reasons, like that's.
You have to own the decision of council collectively. I think that you, you can make a statement that you disagreed, but you still have to support the decision.
Fair.
Counselor Orlando.
I think Counselor Palmer was.
Okay, Counselor Palmer, either one of you, one of you may.
Yeah, so it's interesting, and it's an interesting sort of spot, I think. My, so I think Cindy and I have slightly different perspectives, so I'm probably more in the zone of Tim in that. So for example, I'll give a real life example, it's council made a decision to put in a water line to service. It's my opinion that, that is, I disagree with the decision, I absolutely respect the decision, we move ahead, so I shouldn't be trying to undermine the decision. But at the same time, I, as an individual counselor, in what I perceive as, you know, making responsible decisions, I still have that ability. Proceed is, uh, you know, making responsible decisions, I still have that ability to say, I, you know. That if I so chose to say, okay, I, I think that was a, the wrong decision. Uh, I have to be careful in the social media thing, so I shouldn't be undermining, I agree with that. But to say that I own that decision. I, I can't go that far because I disagreed with that decision. And so, and I, I'm using a real, I'm trying to use, you know, it's a little bit heated at the time, so, uh, in, in, um. I, I, I'm fine with the wording as it is here. Uh, you know, act respectfully and communicate accurately. Um, I, I absolutely agree with that, but also I would say I still have a free voice as an individual, um. And, uh, that's one of the delights of being a politician instead of a bureaucrat, it's like, voice.
Yeah, and so, and I don't necessarily disagree with what you're saying, I think the, the intention of is, is. To, as you use that word, cannot undermine that decision, you know. You voted against it, you had your reasons for voting against it, your mind hasn't been changed on that sort of thing, you're gonna discuss that with your constituents. In whatever capacity, but when you come to the point of undermining it, then you cross that line, and that goes around the table for all of us on any decision. And what I mean by cross the line is if it gets out to the public where you're now promoting your. Decision against that, then you've gone against council, is that, is that, and that's, that's why I'm just bringing it up for discussion.
Yeah, it's, it's a good point, Gary, because it, it's a gray, it's a gray area, because. Uh, in, 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 when we look at politics in general, just in the world, I mean, it's pretty ugly, especially down south of the border and that kind of thing. Hopefully we never get to that point, but at the same time, there is politics and then, you know, when you go into an election as to issues and. What gets highlighted, um, if, if I'm, I, I would say on that decision. Uh. Yeah, you know, there's already, there's already decisions that we've made even in this term. That have been turned over, you know, so that, you know, this sort of respect, and then does a person lobby to try and change the course of direction? Then where is that appropriate and where is it not appropriate? Uh, in this water line, I say, okay, we move on, I have concern, considerations, but we move on. And, um, so it's, it's, I think there's probably, just, I think there's probably a big gray area in that, in that, so.
Councillor Lander?
Yeah, just, um, thank you, my thought was, um, I don't read what you guys are saying in that. So that was my thing, and.
Okay, great, yeah, give us your.
Yeah, um, so, uh, just my thought is, for example, if there's a big issue and, uh. You know, it doesn't go my way, uh, the way I would prefer it to, um, I, I, I am. I feel I'm free to say so, you know, and I, and I can do that without undermining council, like, you know, I can say. Yeah, I thought that was a bad decision, I think it's gonna hurt us, uh, long term, uh, it's just wrong direction, you know, that's why I didn't vote for it. Uh, and that's my opinion, I don't understand how that's undermining a decision-making process and, and, and conversely, um. Ish, I can't go out there and say, I thought, I think it was great, you know, like, like, that, that makes no sense, you know, it's me, so. I just, and that's my main point, is I do, in that last, uh, section I, I don't read that in there, so I don't really interpret it to mean that.
Uh, so you guys okay with how this?
Well, I'm, I'm okay with the way it's, way it's written, I mean, there's, so act respectfully and communicate. You know, you might think how I react or is disrespectful, and I might disagree with you on what's respectful and what's not disrespectful. And how can you define to that, that ability without a dictatorship, it's impossible, I would say.
You okay with that? Everybody's okay with that? Let's move on.
All right, so Jane again is part of the community charter, gifts of her personal benefits, um. They address, the sections address the receipt and recording of gifts and personal benefits for members and the consequences of contravention, so. In the community charter, again, the majority of the policies that I reviewed did have, contain a statement of promise.
So when we, yeah, and, and I'll just touch on this briefly, when we talk about gifts, we're talking, and somebody comes in and gives a. Gift of blessing or value sort of thing, you, you know, we'd have to look at this kind of as a one-off sort of thing, if somebody says. Well, council made a decision and everybody gets a new Aston Martin car, uh, that problem, right? And so that's kind of what I'm talking about or asking about that, is there a monetary value wanted? Or does it come down to, uh, it could be cookies or, you know, helping someone with something? And that's why I'm asking about that, how do we define that?
Thanks, your worship, so I think it's more if, let's say there's an applicant and they bring you a bottle of wine before council has heard their. Their application, so it's if they, if that gift could be perceived as swaying your vote.
Promise is.
Go ahead.
Thanks, the promise is not all clearly defined here. My issue with this is it affects my gaming ability. Everything in here, just, I can't, going on dates is kind of. Affected by this. If they pay.
If they pay.
But.
Yeah, but. And then, and so the issue is, are they, are they taking you out for dinner because they want something from council?
Yeah, I know, I need to figure that out too.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's an interesting one, again, I know, Jen, generally, it's, it's covered under the community charter. I, I think, uh, there maybe is a separate policy item that we should be discussing on gifts specifically rather than code of conduct. Um, and, yeah, I think there is so many gray areas, so for example, say if you go to Silga. And you win a gift basket that's worth more than a hundred dollars, and, and, and the. And it's, it would be kind of a ridiculous thing, but I think possibly to the letter of the law. Uh, you know, because that's a gift from a particular entity, in this case, it's, or, or the, or there's the draw from the vendors. So you win a, whatever the thing on a draw, is that a gift? Um, and if I could take, personalize it a little bit more level here, I, you know, I was a critic. Uh, more by circumstance of the RMR smooth session and, uh, and yet. When, when do, you know, does it get down to, again, I'll use the David Raven and Steve Platt thing, like they would, they wouldn't even pay for a coffee. Like it's kind of, gets to kind of a ridiculous spot.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, so having that definition, I think, would be helpful. Because you talked about the developer with the bottle of wine, and, you know, did that occur, did it not occur? And what's the influence? And the reality is in, in, in advertising, you know, a pen is harmless, it is, it, that's where it starts, like in the Sheldon Noe Commission. Back in, familiar, but it's a big, huge blow up and how, how long, when does, when does it cross over into court? Into corruption and that kind of thing, so I'm, I'm kind of rambling on, uh, on various things there.
Okay, councillor Lander, did you have?
Uh, your worship, um, no, not really, other than, um. I just wouldn't, you know, I sort of think a cup of coffee is, you know, the, the, the limit there and I'm pretty, um. Um. Uh, I think it's incumbent on everyone to be careful about that, because, you know, it's the, it's the attempt to schmooze, uh, at the start or something. But there, there is also lots of ways to remedy it, so like, you know, one of the things is it can be awkward, you know, they're like, oh, you know, come to the meeting, yeah, look at the spread, you know? Um, uh, you know, um, so you gotta, you know, so you can, you know, talk to. The CAO right away the next day and say, look, it would be really embarrassing for me to sit there while everyone's eating and not eat, but, you know, I want to show you that I've. You know, paid, uh, you know, for this or something like that, or even the need to communicate ahead of time and just be like, hey. You know, careful here, we're not, you know, gonna, you know, I'm meeting you in here, but, you know, we're not, you know, buying you things, we're doing that kind of stuff, so it makes some effort. But yeah, not really a huge comment on, uh, what is laid out there.
The, the legislation is a hundred dollars, it's a hundred dollars, is that correct?
I believe it is, there is a statement in the policy that is, um, members should avoid situations that result in the receipt of a gift or personal benefit. That could reasonably be viewed as a real or perceived conflict of interest. So it is a gift that. That could affect a decision that you make.
So you guys okay with leaving this in there the way it is?
See, yeah, so I, I'm fine, I think it's unnecessary, I do think. The, uh, the personal gift policy at some point, I don't think it's urgent, uh, to clarify, you know, where, where that. The line is so that there's at least some sort of idea and, and whether, and how that applies to staff, maybe it's very similar, right?
And so I just, I, I want to address this, uh, councillor Cherry, from your perspective, when we're talking about your personal life. Things that are going on in your personal life, that's your personal life, right? Um, versus, uh, someone basically saying, well, I, I want to, uh, have dinner with you because. Uh, I want, I want you to put something forward for me or whatever, you'll know what that. But with your personal life, you're dating someone, and you can get someone to pay the bill for you and still get to be with you the second time. You know, you might be, you might be lucky there, so.
Never strategic. Thanks for the. Yeah, I haven't had any interactions. Turn?
You would just be in a position of conflict with them, so if they had something before council, then you would have to refuse yourself, you know?
Definitely, but everybody does pick our brain, right? Like, it's not just me.
Oh, no, yeah, it took your money, everybody goes through that sort of thing, yeah.
Any opportunity they have, you know, if it's over, if it's a burger, if it's whatever, say pints after volleyball. People try to pick your brain, because they don't watch these meetings very often. Or refuse to go through the agenda for some reason, um, but yeah, just trying not to cause an issue.
Yeah, no, and I think, I think you've got a good grasp on that sort of thing, so.
Gift baskets here, throwing through me.
I think he did that on purpose, right?
I'm sure with other.
Some, some people this cleaned up and those things and others went without them, yeah.
Bunch of golf stuff, jazz tickets.
All right, let's move on to, uh, item two.
Okay, so breaches complaints and discipline, um, basically, we are looking for all of you to agree to abide by the code of conduct. Um, and try to resolve any disputes in good faith before they require, uh, intervention. And we would like to encourage council members to pursue the informal complaint process or procedure. Which, uh, try to remedy the conduct, um, personally before there's a big formal investigation. Have, have enough respect with your, with your fellow council members that you can address them and have a, a conversation to try to change behaviors.
Any comments, uh, from council?
Councillor Chair?
Yeah, I think this serves as a great reminder to stop with the potential bickering or, you know, verbal jabs that. Have been thrown at the table at people over the last seven months, so, I'm in favor of it.
Any other comments?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's an interesting one, again, uh, so advising the other members, so, uh, sometimes, uh, uh. Our, our debate can get heated or passionate here, and then if it, if it, um. Tilt over into an area that's getting borderline or tilting past, you know, acceptable behavior, I think. We, we all, responsibility individually, say, no, we need to stop, because sometimes if we're in the, the debate, we may not be cognizant and really are counting. Our fellow councillors to have our back kind of thing, and say, okay, no, it's time, time, timeout here. So I think we all wear that responsibility, of course, the chair has more, but, uh, um, yeah, so I think it's fair.
Good, I appreciate that comment, uh, any other comments from council? Councillor Lander?
Uh, yeah, just, uh, in general, um, I think the stuff that gets us into troubles, especially interactions with people. Is more in the realm of psychology and structure of communication, uh, uh. Tools or whatever, um, so, um, I just would, you know, recommend, for example, being mindful. Uh, getting in, in, in a mud wrestling match with somebody, uh, over something, you know, like that old meme they had, like, oh my god, something's wrong on the internet. I gotta, I gotta be there, you know, um, you know, uh, and trying to just be mindful that that's part of human psychology to want. You know, oh my god, you, you know what you're talking about, you know, and then that's just, doesn't lead anywhere, so just, uh, take a deep breath and, uh. Try and strategize about, uh, what's gonna be good for you, what's gonna be good for everyone, so.
All right, thank you for that, so Cindy, we're back to, um, the recommendation here.
Yes.
Uh, you wanna discuss that?
Well, so, so we're looking for a recommendation from committee of the whole to council for May twenty-third, um, based on discussions. Just now, um, number two would be the appropriate, uh, recommendation to make. And that the council, uh, code of conduct or responsible conduct be approved with the amendments as discussed today. So, um, those were. Changing the wording to the social media to try to prevent the, um, any confusion.
Move on, the perceived part.
Is that, is that, is that ensure that there is a confusion, which you can't do, you know?
Also the perceived.
And the conflict.
Yeah, that's some words I think, yeah.
Yeah, so, so we will make all the changes that we discussed today. Bring it to council on the twenty-third, you can have a final look at it and choose whether or not council wants to adopt it.
So, uh, just a comment on that and then a question, um, I guess you're both questions. Uh, on that, perhaps maybe circulate a, a track changes document in advance of the, uh. Uh, the agenda, the agenda package, so we can see that, just in case there's any sort of.
For sure, yep.
Uh, the other is, we, we did discuss the, um, uh, complaint handling. And I did have a question on that, so we have six months of the last, last event, and I always get concerned about these things. The timeline strategy, you know, was there, was that just basically modeled after the other ones?
It was, yes.
Because certainly my preference would be a shorter period of time, you know, because if you're not addressing the stuff in a timely manner.
Right.
Then, um, so I, you know, intuitively, I like to say like one month, but you know, whether it's three months or maybe, it, it can stay at the six months. But it just seems okay.
I would, formal or informal?
I would, I would, I would second what, what, what councillor Palmer has said, I think, uh, I think the six months could be. You know, I, I mean, I can barely remember what I did yesterday, um, so if you, if you called me out on my action six months ago, I wouldn't even know who you're talking about.
Yeah, and, and I don't disagree with that sort of thing as well, thinking that, you know, a shorter time, maybe two months. Um, would be more, more prudent, but how do you guys feel on it, councillor Cherry, what do you have to add?
Thanks, uh, is this in relation to handling complaints or logic?
Formal complaints, so.
I saw thirty days.
Uh, no, it's, it's six months, then thirty days, it's, it's after, so you don't have to complain for half a year.
All right, uh, if, if we're gonna change that. Can there be a clause that triggers, uh, you know, say up to six months, for example, let's say we let something slide. Past the timeline and then it happens again and opens the door to the first one?
Well, that's a second, that's a, uh. It's a complaint, but it's based on the first one, so.
The first one would be out of time.
Yeah.
But if it happened again, you know, the goal is, you know, we all tend to let things go once or twice, hoping they won't happen again, and if they do.
Yeah, councillor Palmer, you wanna lay in on that?
Yeah, yeah, so first of all, this is after the last ledge breach, so you don't have to, so, so the, it can be retroactive years, quite frankly, if it's an ongoing behavior. Uh, and so, but, uh, you know, my preference is to have a short, shorter timeline, but it could also be, say, okay, within thirty day. I preferably within thirty days, but in no circumstances more than six months of the last. Um, so that it's encouraged, it's just a, a thought, you know, and.
That's actually pretty decent, that you guys all feel comfortable with that sort of scenario?
I'm, I'm okay with it, I just, my goal isn't to weaponize this, it's to. You know, stop an action that's becoming common.
So it doesn't become habit?
Yes, but everybody's gonna let the first one or two go, and it's not gonna continue and then.
Councillor Lucy, how do you run it?
Um, it's kind of uncovered with everybody else, um, yeah, I think a shorter timeline makes more sense, because the longer we let these things through, the harder it's gonna be. To actually come to resolution.
So let's, let's change that, can we, Cindy, to thirty days and then? So let's let's change that, can we, Cindy, to thirty days and then Matt?
More than six months, for sure.
Okay, good, all right, anything else on on that? I know we covered responsible conduct. So we want to go back to.
If we can have a recommendation, that would be great.
Uh, Councilor Palmer. I'll make the motion for number two.
Okay.
With the amendments, yeah.
Yeah, so that basically says, uh, council code of responsible conduct be approved of the following amendments as mentioned. And now, once approved, all council members sign the code of responsible conduct attestation, appendix A. And so basically, my comment, I think when we were going through this, Cindy, was. And we verbally state that in front of our peers, or in front of you, and then sign that attestation. So any comment from council on that? I I guess I better get a second for that motion, so I want to second that that motion about what Counselor Palmer just spoke for. Councilor Lynn, all right, now any further discussion on that? I I circumvented that basically by saying, hey, I stated verbally that's not in the motion, it's just an opinion that I had. Any further comments on that, on the motion going forward to council? So now, call a question, all is in favor? Opposed, no motions carried, thank you, Cindy, appreciate that. Let's move on to electronic meeting policy.
So this one here is just to formalize our electronic meeting meetings. In June of twenty twenty one, kind of on the heels of COVID. There was Bill Ten from the municipal affairs that made changes to the community charter allowing for electronic meetings to occur. It was in the legislation prior, but it was only for special meetings. So this came kind of came across the board. In October of twenty one, we amended council procedure by law to allow for this. And then, so basically, this is just to formalize a way so that staff and council are all participating in electronic meetings in the same fashion. Again, this was reviewed through with other electronic meeting. Policies around municipalities around B C. So there's kind of two different parts here, electronic meeting is a meeting where all members of council participate electronically. Whereas electronic participation is a meeting where some members participate electronically. And so again, the draft policy components general. The idea is to arrive ten minutes early if you are participating electronically to make sure all of your equipment is functioning, that your. Video is working, your sound is working. Uh, we would like to have the screen names reflect your actual names. Because if you had Matt on there.
Then.
The the, no, no, but the the community might not know that you're counselor chair, so it's kind of important that way. It's very important not to share meeting links because Jaleen manages that and we don't want to have any pirating of the. Of the meetings. We also would like participation in an area free from distractions, so perhaps not in a vehicle with other people in the vehicle. And it would be great if you could inform the chair prior to leaving a meeting if you need to depart early. So that's the general. Video, council members should have their cameras on at all times unless there's a weak signal, in which case I believe you should. Touch base with the chair to advise him that there may be an issue with your video. Uh, public and staff will have their cameras off at all times and turn them on only when speaking. And that way, the public that is watching have more of an opportunity to view council themselves. This mostly is for staff, but again, the screen share, we should only do that when presenting and immediately upon completion, that way. The public can see how you're interacting with each other rather than just seeing what's up on the screen like is right now. Um, audio, we would like anybody participating electronically to mute their microphones unless they're speaking. And you can raise your hand to alert the chair that of your desire to speak, either in person or with the little raised hand. I believe the chair watches for both of those. Uh, voting, council members will physically raise their hands and the chair will announce the results of the vote. Whether it was carried or defeated, if you are unable to physically raise your hand, I believe in the past, Councilor Palmer has said aye or nay. So as long as you are very clear on what your vote is. Uh, conflict of interest, so if you're participating electronically, conflict and you have a conflict, we'd like you to state your conflict in general terms. And then staff will remove you from the electronic meeting. And then they'll readmit you once that item has been completed. That hasn't happened to us yet.
Oh, this is.
This is.
For conflicts?
Yeah.
Electronically?
Yeah.
I don't recall that.
And you just disappeared.
Can we let you go?
I'd say.
You remember?
I mean, that's wrapping a mandala moment.
So does anybody have any comments? Would you like to see something different happen with this? It just makes it a lot easier for corporate staff if everybody's doing the same thing. Because we need to note in the minutes when somebody comes, when they leave, when they, and it's too hard to manage. All of the things at once without having a specific policy to follow.
Councilor Palmer, Councilor State, and Councilor Lynn.
Uh, yeah, thank you for putting it together and certainly appreciate the understanding the merits behind this, and I'm not opposed to. Any components, I'll just make a couple of comments as a person, as a counselor or participant. Well, actually, first a question, so this is in general is for electronic participation, not electronic meetings as such.
That's correct.
So it doesn't address the electronic meetings per se?
No, that will be a further discussion on the council procedure by law.
Okay, so you might, I think that's, I think it's probably stated well enough because it says in the policy directive, we might want to be explicit on an electronic meeting if it's going to be addressed somewhere else. Because at first I was thinking this was applying to electronic meetings as well, kind of a minor thing, but just to take a look at that. Um, so a couple of observations from the participant side. Um, one of the things on that I've noted, like even right now, I'm not sure how we're being viewed, or if I was electronically at this meeting. We sometimes become larger than life, so if I was speaking, suddenly I'm on the entire entire screen. Um, and so I've been one of those people that have turned off the camera. For a couple of reasons, but one is that sort of larger-than-life kind of aspect, yeah, and. Uh, especially if I'm not active, but just, I I feel that the part, because people are reviewing it. There's too much analytics of me as an individual counselor, so. If I'm on all the time, so that was part of the reason for me to turn off the camera. The, just a comment on the voting. And the hands up, so on the voting, I think this one's pretty straightforward, so by raising a hands. The the reality is if we don't vote, what's in the affirmative anyway, so if it's not caught and then if. If for some reason there's an error, it's just a point of order saying, no, I voted against or for this. The, so, and then the other observation is on the raising of hands, I've tried to use the raising. Or like, and it if it. It's, I think, probably a challenge for the chair, but there's been some meetings where it's. Quite a few times, it's not, I'm not acknowledged, and then I just let it, just let it go. Now, again, I can do point of order or whatever, but it's a it's a challenge of, you know, the raising the hands or the electronic, I don't know if there's an answer to that other than. Uh, the the point of order aspect, yeah, so that I think that's my comments, I'm fine with the way it is, so.
Councilor State.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, just to echo what Counselor Palmer has said, I did, I also find that. You know, turning off your camera can be can be advantageous, especially if like, you know, you've done your best to try to put yourself in like a in a good situation. But, you know, ultimately, maybe the background distracting or or whatever, and especially if you have like, you know, an earpiece in. I personally, you know, I would rather just turn off the camera than, you know, have. Everybody see the environment that I'm in, those are just my two thoughts, but otherwise, I'm in support of it.
And so what do we do with, and I'll just ask this question, when we do about, do you want to turn your camera back on for the. You know, that sort of.
Yeah.
Uh, so so two things happen, so I'll just go to kind of what we do at CSRD or what's. They they make me, if I'm not there, make me keep my camera on to make sure my presence is known. Right, if the internet is terrible, then of course, switch the camera off and two or three of them will be on there depending where they are in that. That the internet may not be good, but then when we go to vote, it's either turn the camera on or make sure that they know that one's present, so. It it may be not cut and dry, but that's worth it, so, Councilor Lynn.
Uh, your worship, thank you, so I have two things, the first part is just more technical stuff, and it was actually addressed in the conversation, so. Um, my thought is, yeah, and I've had experience of managing like large classrooms, mixed classrooms will happen in class, happen home. Uh, sometimes and it gets really hard right away, and you miss things, so I'm wondering if there's not a technological solution to those things, so for example. Zooming in on one person like the the view we have now, do we have like a Brady Bunch view where we could all be like in little panels and turn it on? Or, and then the other thing about people putting up their hand and missing it, it can be hard to like. See that because you're focusing on other things, so is that something that staff who are running the. Uh, thing to do, or is there some sort of a prioritized function that we're just not using this within Zoom or whatever? Where it, you know, puts things in an order or like something like that, I think there might be those functions, there's, it might just be a matter of coordinating that. So that's just an observation. My main question is, and I emailed Cindy just because I, just to just to let her know that I was a bit confused about everything, there's existing policies already, and I'm just not sure how this all fits together with the. Existing participation policy, there's like a maximum twenty five percent, or you're only allowed to miss so many meetings, I just don't know how these work together, so, yeah.
Thanks, Councilor Hondo, so. There isn't a policy on the twenty five percent that is in the council procedure by law. And we are going to discuss this following, whether or not you guys want to tweak that or not. So it's kind of a next, this this is just how you participate, it's not setting up rules on how often you can participate electronically.
Okay, okay.
All right, I did just squeak out.
Okay. So this is just the, just what's written here, and any extra rules are. To be considered separately, like on the next agenda.
Councilor Cherry, then Counselor Palmer.
Thanks, your worship, uh. Kind of feel like a lot of these are directed towards me and some of the meetings I attended.
No, no, no.
No, there's been. No, it's okay, there's been times where I've been, like I've had, for example, I've had a bunch of funerals I've had to go to over the last six months, ridiculous amount, so there's been times where. Flight gets canceled in Kelowna, I gotta drive to Vancouver, I don't want to miss the meeting. Um, you know, I think the one time I stopped at Starbucks and then I had to leave, or else I wouldn't have made the next flight anyways. Love to be able to turn the camera off, especially because Zoom drains every device.
Yeah.
There was, you know, an anecdotal experience, I was in Toronto. Some drunk hit a power line, lost all power, so I had to go to running off. My five G off my phone through all three devices until they almost all died. It was terrible, so I took my camera, had my camera off as much as possible.
And, you know, and I think there's always going to be circumstances like that, we'll just roll with it as as we can.
Yeah, just I hate to see policy like this be weaponized at any time in the future. And that's kind of my only concern, I think I understand why you'd like us to see us all. But I think, I think that's four of us now, so it's not going to be saying that again.
Yeah, so just further to the bylaw on this, so this says policy is not binding as such.
Yeah.
Um, so there's, so the bylaw is binding, so if the if the participation was in the bylaw, there'd have to be camera on, then it's binding.
Yeah.
But this is in a policies and there's wiggle room on it. The, so. I actually had a point, but I don't anymore.
Counselor.
Actually, just just for there, it's not targeting you at all, I mean, I've I've used it a lot.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, there's background distractions that I've had, also with traveling. And quite frankly, I've turned off the the camera when I want to stretch and not have the whole world watching me stretch.
Yeah, and I think we've all, we've all done that, I I was, I think, to Williams Lake to. For my wife's eye surgery and she was driving because I had a CSRD meeting that I had to attend and. It was like, oops, I'm going around a corner, and the odd thing was, I was voted chair of the meeting and I'm going like, well, what the hell now, I might have. I don't, you know, how do I participate, anyway, so those things happen, so.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, I keep laughing, by the way, I just can't can't get that video of that meeting where the guy, it was a cat. Out of my head, yeah, he turned his thing on and made him a cat. I just can't get that out of my head.
All right, Councilor Lucy, any comments?
Um, we've kind of covered it, but I know when it comes to like discussion, when. You're participating electronically, sometimes you don't notice the hand up, and I know when I did a meeting, you asked me to turn my video on. When you knew that I wanted to contribute to the conversation, so I'm just glad that there's some wiggle room with this game policy.
Yeah. That's it, Councilor State, any further comment?
Uh, no, maybe the the last comment I'll quickly make is, you know, the the concern that Ms. Floyd brought up about, you know, attracting attendance. You know, maybe, you know, if there's, you know, the the willingness of council to 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 change this. So that we could have the camera off, but maybe just tell the chair, hey, look, I'm going to be here for as long as I can be. You know, you can tell it as a happenstance or a, you know.
But there's always ways, you know, now that we've got, everybody's got cell phone numbers, so should something happen, say, I have to leave. Whatever, you can always send Cindy a text and and say, hey, I'm leaving, that sort of thing. That that happens to me every once in a while with CSRD stuff, and when the meetings tend to go long, it's like. You know, and I've got other appointments, there, you know, a prime example is, sorry, I've got committee of the hall. I've got to go, and so I won't, I'm not sending the chair a text, I'm sending the recording secretary a text saying, I have to leave now. Just note that my time I've left and and go, right, so those are the things I think we get to know. So Cindy, you would like us to make a motion that this comes forward to council?
That's correct.
Um, so we're making. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I just just think, before we make that motion, I'm quite happy, and I think we're generally, but on the video thing, I think we've all talked about that, so I'm just worrying about. On the video, the council members participating electronically endeavor to keep their cameras on and maybe some other qualifiers, so rather than this must.
Yeah.
Kind of thing, and I think that's grabbing the intention.
I am, yeah, so I will do the track changes for that one as well and share it before.
And then I'll. And then I'll put the motion on with that.
So item number two, approved of the following amendments.
Yeah.
Second for that motion, Councilor Cherry, any further discussion on that? All in favor? More than carry, I'm going to move on to procedure by law.
All right, so this was another fun one. I believe Councilor Cherry kind of spurred this on, we knew that it had to happen, but. Kind of like a fire under corporate's. Seats. So this, I really just want it to be discussion. The intent is to, so what I did was. the province in 2022 created this procedure bylaw guide. It's linked in your report. And it was collaboration with the province, LGMA and UBCM with the working group on responsible conduct. So the same group that worked on that standard, the forging for responsible conduct. So they established this guide and in the guide, it lays out the legislative requirements and then also best practices. So anytime we make changes to the council procedure, we need to give notice to the public. So you'll see in the presentation later on, there's a timeline that includes the required notification. But our current bylaw was adopted in 2016. It's only been amended twice on October 21st, and that was to allow for the electronic meetings following COVID in, sorry, October 2021. And then again, in February 2022, we amended it again because we did not include the electronic participation for committee and commission meetings. So our bylaw meets all of the legislative requirements. It does not meet all of the best practices. So this is where I have a bunch of questions for counsel on whether or not you want to consider the best practices that we don't meet. We do meet a lot of them and in the, the rather long report or discussion paper, I apologize for that, but I tried to lay out, lay out where we met and where we didn't through the gray check marks and the red Xs. So the first section is the role of counsel in conduct and debate. Best practices are to include the use of electronic devices during meetings. They've addressed them, whether or not council members should or can use electronic devices and under what circumstances. So the question is, do you as a council want to include something related to that? Or are you good with the way things are happening right now?
Well, so we all use electronic devices by way of our iPads, right?
Yes, I think this is more this. So council discussion is happening and.
Okay. So yeah, let's talk a little bit about that. So council discussion may be happening. And then I may be getting texts from staff because something's coming up or we need to deal with something or I forgot something.
Right.
Right? And so I don't have an issue with that. I'm not seeing wanton use around the table of, of cell phones. It's pretty, you know, if there's an emergency, that sort of thing. But so what do you guys think? What's going on the table? How do you feel?
What'd you guys say?
Um, yeah, it's, it's an interesting thing. And so long as it doesn't, I think there's two, the two danger areas, whether it becomes a distraction.
Right.
Um, to the individual counselor and that's, that's maybe more of a code of conduct issue as opposed to a procedural thing. The, the other is lobbying, lobbying and debate between, because this is a problem, something debate that's occurring outs in this electronic world simultaneously. So if Counselor Cherry and I are saying, well, we need to change, you know, we need to steer, then that, you know, how, what's that effect? And so that's, I think, the challenging area. I don't think we've had that problem. The, and it's been quite useful sometimes to minimize distraction in the meeting. So I know there's been the odd time I've texted Cindy saying, okay, what about blah, blah, blah? And you said, yeah, it's okay. And it just stops the distraction in the meeting. So I think it's been very useful from that perspective. And then the other, on the, you know, I really don't think there's a problem because then the other reason to allow the devices to be on is sometimes we have personal things in our life and we need to have some kind of availability as to, you know, so for example, in my situation, my wife has, is able to track where I'm at, I'm at on my, so if we were to prohibit the devices, then that starts to infringe on personal life as, as well. So I, I'm that's, I guess that's my comments. I don't think there's a problem. And if there is an issue, maybe that's more in a code of conduct.
Sure. Counselor Cherry.
I agree with Counselor Palmer. I don't see there being an issue, but just so everybody knows, when the camera used to be over there and there was a previous council, you know, the public was able to see what a certain council person was being texted and reading out, having conversation at the table and privately. So I think that's what spurred this.
Sure. Counselor Luciano, comment?
Um, yeah, I think we collectively are fairly respectful of each other's time and the discussions is happening at the table. I think it's a hard thing to make a firm rule on working in restaurants. There's always been that discussion of like, should there be no cell phones? And it's an impossible one fully enforced and you're going to get pushback of how that is. I think right now we're respectful of each other and I don't think that that needs to really be expanded on and tightened up. Yeah, so that's my thoughts there.
Counselor Orlando, comment?
Uh, yeah, I don't really see a problem at this point. And the reality is these days is, is there's expectations of sort of real time communication. So somebody could come down to me with an emergency of some kind and be like, where are you? And they, you know, so, and I just don't think there's been a problem. Yeah.
Counselor.
Um, I would, I would agree with, with what's been said around the table. I don't really think there's a problem with cellphone use. I think, you know, there's potential of like a ethical or a moral. You know, but I think that's on the individual and we're not really policing that right now. So I think it's just to be cognizant of like when we have presentations, you know, and making sure that we're like being present and giving them the attention they deserve. So, yeah, that's.
And from the church perspective, as I look around the table, I don't see there being an issue. As you've all stated, you're all very present and if there's an emergent deal, deal with the emergency and go from there. You know, work that I am still doing is, you know, there's things that happen where there is emergency and if I'm sitting at this table, I need to be able to put other people in their place to deal with those situations. So I don't have an issue with that. So I think if we leave that kind of what, what you've got. Go ahead.
So the next one is should existing policies be connected? So one of the best practices was that we link the, our current policies into the bylaw. I don't really see the benefit other than, then you get to Counselor Palmer's point where the, the policy is more, you can decide whether or not you want to follow the policy, but the bylaw is required.
It'd be a lot easier to find having them linked. You just only have that one thing, one tab open.
But if they're linked, then you're required to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd be very reticent to like, if, if, if we want it in the bylaw, put it in the bylaw. I, I, because that essentially the policy then becomes by law. I, I, I think that's confusing.
And, and so from my perspective, I, I agree not having it linked puts the onus on the individual counselor to be present and to be able to follow code of conduct, social media, whatever the case may be versus saying, okay, oops, you did wrong. Somebody's got to slap your hand. That's where it goes. So. Counselor Luciano, comment?
Um, yeah, I would agree with that. With the ability to kind of modify the policy as we move forward with the electronic meetings and stuff like that, if it's tied directly to the bylaw, then I think we would have to go back to what we had just talked about to kind of rein that in a little bit more.
Counselor Orlando.
Yeah, I, I would have to that I just, I favor the policy or mean policy.
Counselor's favorite.
Yeah, I'll add to that as well. I think policies are guidelines and bylaws are bylaws and they're two separate things and they shouldn't be linked together.
Okay. All right.
Great. Okay. So designating a member to act in place of the mayor, sorry.
I do interrupt. Uh, what's in front of us here is a little different than what's on the screen.
So what's in front of you there is in the, the discussion paper, wherever there's a red X, that's what's up on the screen.
I understand. I do, there's one thing on the screen, I think, that I don't want to skip over.
Okay, what's that?
A reasonable length of time a council member can speak on a given matter.
What section is that under?
Part four, under real and council conduct and debate. I know we have a green check mark here, one of the piece of favor, but we do not have the time and there's been numerous occasions where people just rant, they've gone way off topic and spoken for 10, 15 minutes without something that was not even connected to the matter on the floor. And that needs to be made in. A reasonable length of time a council member can speak on a given matter. Um.
So would you, are you suggesting that there is a timeframe?
I think there needs to be. And I'm open to discussion with everybody here.
To determine what a reasonable timeframe is?
Yeah, if they're even open to it. Revotals, everything. And the goal of here is to have all of us, you know, muted after a certain timeline. It's to stop, you know, I don't want to say the grandstanding to the camera, but you know, everything going so far off topic that things are getting confused when it's not even about the matter at hand anymore.
Okay. So then that, I'll let Counselor Palmer speak and then I'm going to speak to that. So Counselor Palmer.
Um, yeah, so I, I believe, I believe the timeframes are actually there and we, we don't, I, I think there's, is there not a 10 minute within the legislation?
That's under committee of the whole. There is nothing under the council.
Okay, interesting. Probably the same regulations should generally apply. The, the other, so that's just committee of the whole. Oh, interesting. The, uh, on the debate, so this is probably in, so certainly in Robert's Rules of Order, not necessarily time, but people's opportunity for, for speaking to a matter and having the floor for that, that period, for whatever that period of time. Certainly the chair has the prerogative to, when it's going off, has the prerogative to shut that down. There is also rights of individuals in the, in the committee to expound. So, you know, possibly that timeline. I, I, I think it's largely covered because if you start to curtail debate, uh, like I think we had one little tangle where we had a difference of opinion on that. And I think there were some procedural anomalies on that that created that situation.
That's what.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I, I don't dispute that. So the time, the timelines might be appropriate. But I think really the onus is on the chair because if it goes off topic, you have the ability to drain that in.
To bring it back in. And so you as counselors do have the ability to just raise your hand and go, you point to border, um, we've got off topic or whatever. And that may remind me to bring it back, right?
Yeah.
You guys okay with that sort of thing, that scenario?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Discuss more.
I think that we should have timelines though to keep things. Some of these meetings have gone super late. You know, it's one thing if we're having an open debate and we're not seeing eye to eye, but once, it, once the debate's finished.
Okay.
Um, I'm not saying three minutes like at public hearings, but it'd be great to see, I, I know there's other councils that have time restrictions and I know nobody wants to sit there with a stopwatch. But, you know, there's been, there's been times.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I think, I think it's definitely has merits and it mirrors on the, on the 10 minute because it generally, we're not going to be watching the clock, but it creates that opportunity of theories of a counselor or a perception of a counselor uh, going on too long, then it limits that 10 minutes is a long time.
So I'm going to ask this question. So, you know, if we get to that length of time and we've done, whoever's speaking has said their piece and then, oh, I want to speak one more time. If I ask the question to you, is this further information to what you've already spoken or are you repeating yourself? Are you going to be offended with that? And I don't want to word that in a way that's offensive. So.
Yeah. If I, anyway, because you, you have that ability. That's already, that's already with Robert's Rules of Order. So if it's being repeated over and over and over again, uh, the, uh, you have the ability to shut that, shut that down right away. Just the other, uh, oh, just, yeah, just a, a point for this council. Yeah, sometimes it goes on and we need to have the dialogue and there's more information. I, I don't think it's nearly as bad as like with the previous council. We had one counselor that was bringing it up after, immediately after every resolution we had a replay. Yeah.
What counsel statementers?
I just wanted to state that like, I've actually really appreciated a lot of the dialogue that we've been having at this table, hearing everybody's opinions. And I don't want to have anybody feel like they're, you know, within a timeframe or a limit. And I think, you know, the audience should be on the chair just to kind of make sure we stay on topic, make sure that we're moving forward. But I think, you know, I think having the dialogue is really important because I don't want people to feel like, you know, they're being left out, they're not being heard. You know, their views aren't being expressed. So I kind of, I'm more of the mindset of just leaving it as it is for now.
My goal here isn't to limit the dialogue. It's very hard unless you're taking a massive amount of notes and someone's gone a 10 minute rant to actually rebut things individually. So I'm just looking, if we can sharpen that up, I think it'd be productive.
Okay.
Just to, if I may follow up to Counselor Cherry's point there, I don't view these as rants. I view them as, you, you know, it's not a rant. It's somebody expressing their opinion and when we come into a mindset of saying, you know, oh, Council Chair is just, you know, going off at the, at the well again and just, you know, spewing a whole bunch of nonsense. You, you know, we're not having a dialogue. We're just coming into this with a mindset of like, oh, great. Here we go again. Like hit the timer. Let's go 10 minutes.
All right.
You're holding on a second. We have some time.
Apologies for not using the term rant.
But it's just, it, it's, 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 you know, it's going back to before. It's having a dialogue and coming into the table and, you know, you know, having, having the ability to have your mind changed during the discussion. Right? Like that's kind of the intent of this process is not to come in and say, well, you know, this is my way or the highway. You know, it's to come in and say, okay, listen, like, you know, I've heard, I've heard what the people on the streets have had to say. I want to hear what my other counselors have to say because we're talking to other people and having that dialogue, like having that exchange of information. And then, you, you know, like you may be swayed. So that's kind of my mindset on this.
Counselor Luciano.
Um, yes, thank you. Um, yeah, I'd have to agree that like the discussions we've had around the table have been good. I think the clarification of like, does your 10 minutes run up until you ask a question that's directed towards staff? Or if you then have a follow-up, is that continuing on your 10 minutes? If we just sit here and don't have any rebuttals, are we just letting someone run out their 10 minutes so they can't talk after that? I think there's ways to use that timeline to affect the conversation at the table. I agree that we don't need the grandstanding and the unnecessary description of the topic we're talking about because we obviously know what we're talking about to kind of direct the conversation a little bit faster. But I think the timeline might be a little bit too restrictive. I think if it mirrors the committee of the whole with at least 10 minutes. But yeah, I think the clarification on, once you ask a question, does that restart your timer? Or is that just a continuation of your 10 minutes?
Yeah. So I think we'll play that by ear in my mind, but Counselor Orlando, you haven't weighed in yet before I go back to Counselor Cherry.
Uh, yes, your worship. Yeah, I don't really support a timeline. I think the chair always has the ability to cut off debates. Um, I think having a timeline might change the dynamic in that, you know, if I, if I wanted to run the clock on something and not, you know, get to the answer, whatever, knowing that I'm about to, you know, run out of time. So, yeah.
Pictures have what, 30 seconds now? Let that ball go. 90 seconds.
Yeah. I mean, we chop that up as a good intention with potential negative consequences. So just.
Counselor Palmer.
Yeah, just like, um, three points. So first of all, as Counselor Cherry ranted for more. Uh, so yeah, just affirming what Counselor Orlando, I think the tools are there with the chair and you did ask the question, Mayor Sols, on, are you fine with this? And, and I'm absolutely fine and encourage it. Uh, and I think we have the opportunity and I think you've respected that if we say, okay, this is going on. And also when you're, you know, it's trying to be cut off. If there's new, I think there is our ability as individual signal, I have some new information. And yeah, that's, that's it. So you're good.
All right. Any further discussion on this point? Seeing none. Ms. Floyd?
All right. So designating a member to act in place of the mayor. And just sorry, on that note, in the 10 minute conversation, there are a lot of red Xs. So I'm not sure if your, your worship, if you want everybody to weigh in or if you, like you want to go around the table or if you just want to address people that have something to say on the topic. Because we, we have a while to go. Address people that have something to say on the topic. Cause we, we have a while to go.
Yeah, let's, let's go through, you've got your best practices, you've got your presentation up there. Let's go through that. If there's some other things that council feels that we need to address as we go through, let's, let's address them.
Okay, so um currently we have um acting mayor positions laid out for the year. Some best practices, um according to this uh guide. They lay out long-term leave of absence uh regulations to designate a position of acting mayor through the election. Um by all of, all members. So for example, your worship, if you were on extended leave for six months. Do you want to have all of council vote for an acting mayor? Or would you switch? Would you wanna keep it? Counselor Cherry does it for his two months, then Counselor Palmer does. Do you want consistency across a long-term leave?
Well, I think we need to go around the table and ask that question. If I were to weigh in on that, to give each of our counselors. Uh the ability to sit in the chair and to do the job gives a wide range of experience around the table. And they might have uh an appreciation for the position as we go through things. But what do you guys feel like around the table? How do you feel? Counselor's statement.
I, I think. Uh one of my concerns would be that if we opted to go with a long-term acting mayor. What would be the event if, if, so primary acting, primary mayor leave of absence, secondary acting mayor. Leave of absence, then a third, as opposed to, you know, if you're rotating it through. Um that might mitigate that, that potential. And then I think the other thing is. Um I think it allows people the opportunity to, to be in that role and it kinda adds. Um just some succession planning and, and training and, you know, opportunities. And I think there's a benefit to, to. You know, our potential benefit for everybody at the table for that. So that's my two cents on that. Thanks.
Counselor Orlando, comment?
Uh I support keeping it the way it is. Uh and um. Uh the only comment I would have is not super related, it's just um making sure that um people are aware of what, of what that means. You know, so for example, you might need to go sign and check that city fall um or those kinds of things while you're acting there. So maybe even just a link to, or even a reminder that now you're acting there in case the mayor's out of town or something.
Um yeah, I would agree. I think we deal with enough decisions. We don't have to make use the acting mayor. We already have that designated to us. Um I agree with Counselor Orlando that a little, you know. Reminder or like the expectations of that as acting mayor. Um that might be beneficial with for maybe counselors around the table.
Counselor Chair.
Uh long-term leave? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Long-term leave, I, I would be in the opinion that if it's six months, there's six of us. Everybody got it for a month, just to share that knowledge and to see what that chair feels like, the gavel.
Squishy.
Um. I don't want you to see. But.
Pretty big gavel, huh?
But uh that's, that's how I feel. Um I think it'd be uh the experience, the wealth of experience that we all have with uh. Teach us a lot.
Counselor Palmer, comment?
It's just debating as to how much I weigh in. So I, on the hypothetical situation that you're gone for six months. Uh and may, maybe we're having too much conversation around this hypothetical situation. Um if that was real, then the responsibilities go much beyond the chairing of the meeting. It's much, much, much more. And uh, and it's not the right place for a training ground. Especially on a rotation from my perspective. Um and so for that hypothetical situation, I think we could have that discussion at the time when it occurs. Um some communities have a, like Sycamore's has a designated for the whole term, the alternate mayor. Or acting mayor. Um then just to comment on the training. Uh I, I, I think that's an area, so it's a little bit aside from this, but the opportunity for uh encouraging. Skill development by counselors. Uh cause the time goes by and there isn't, uh that doesn't occur. And I had that discussion with some of the counselors from the previous council that uh. Because once you're thrust into it, basically you become a puppet, essentially staffed for state of emergency or something. If you're gone. You'll know this stuff, but generally uh somebody new. On chairing meetings, I think really from my perspective. I'll, I'll shut this off pretty quick. Uh is the opportunity uh for counselors to be chair of committees. And possibly a consideration of the committee of the whole. So some communities, there's a rotation or a designate on. To, to create that skill development uh of, of chairing meetings. Um uh but then I'll just uh confirm that right now, I, I don't think it's broken on as far as the. The, 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 this rotation that's being done, it's fine. Um and there's the pros and cons of other, other ways, so, but I think there is opportunity for individual counselor uh opportunity. Outside of long-term absence.
All right, so the next one, and these aren't required. This is something that, so it says, should a requirement for the mayor to advise the corporate officer. Of acting mayor be specified? So right now, the mayor does tell me. Okay, Counselor Cherry's acting, he's going to do this, this, and this. It's not written in our bylaw. So that's the only reason why it's on here. Should it be specified in the council procedure bylaw? Are you guys okay with the way it's happening now?
It's okay.
And so that basically means if I'm gonna be away. Whoever's in that rotation is gonna take that meeting and be able to go from there. And that in turn. Uh sparks staff up to communicate with that counselor to say. Um you know, I, I would already have that conversation with whoever's rotation and say, listen, I have to be away. Can you um fill in while I'm away? And then um staff wouldn't have that conversation, say, okay, here's what your responsibilities are going to be for this time period.
Thanks, Richard. Uh from my experience working in the private sector, if it's not written as a policy, sometimes it doesn't get done. Uh for that, I think we should have as, as much of it written down as possible.
Okay. Counselor Palmer, comment?
Hmm, I, I think it's actually inferred, inferred. So there's a, the acting counselor is, or at the. Acting mayor, if you're gone, that's already through the schedule. It's already established, that's clear. And you take on the entire duties of the mayor. Uh not recognizing that you're not, so that's, that's there. So if you're not here and there is a, an address that needs to be done or um. Uh quite frankly, a ribbon cutting or a.
Yeah.
Uh a special meeting uh or a state of emergency, that's all in, entrenched in, in that. So I don't think any further specifications really necessary because we're gonna spend a lot of time on hypotheticals.
Sure.
Um and also in the unusual events within either the, the, the procedure bylaws that exist. Or within Robert's Rules of Order, there is, yes, the second acting mayor's not there, there is. Procedures already established for recognizing that's a decision of council. So I don't think we need to.
Yeah, I think our policy kind of states, and I could be wrong here, but policy kind of states, so if I was gone, the acting mayor for that term was gone. It would be the next uh who's ever scheduled next to be taken in or not.
No, we don't have that. Um Counselor Palmer was correct. In Robert's Rules, it's that those members that are present. Decide.
And, and, and because Robert's Rule is referred into the procedure bylaw, it is the bylaw essentially.
Any comments from anyone else?
Yeah, um not really so much about the policy, but I just uh think uh, just to reiterate that if. Uh there should be no surprises to somebody who's acting there. So like walking into a meeting not knowing you have to chair it or. Um suddenly the, the, the river's flooding and, you know, if you didn't, you know.
Any other comments? Counselor Chair, you have any?
No.
Okay.
Please comment, please act.
I think it's still me.
Hey.
I believe it's me and that's why I bring it up, cause I swapped with uh Counselor Devlin.
Yeah, I'm, I'm off the hook now.
So that, that's an interesting communications thing though, because I don't know that. If I was, if you were gone, I'd look at the list. So that's a communications thing.
Yeah. And that, that is on the list, that swap.
Okay, gotcha.
Is it up the article?
No.
None of this.
Yeah, and yours, just, just a comment. I uh, I pride myself on being prepared for meetings, but one of the meetings I was the least prepared for on my last term. I went and walking in and not knowing I needed to chair it.
And that's all we do. I go, okay, what's on me, Jim? How are we gonna deal with that? So I think we need to be cognizant of making sure whoever's rotation it is is aware of what's going on.
Souls, we, we've got quite a bit to go through. I think this is really good dialogue. Uh I'm not sure that I'm prepared to be sitting here for a really, really long time. And I, I don't know if we could pick this up. Uh or if there is some urgency, if we could pick it up uh again. I, I, we, I'm, I'm good for a while, but by five o'clock, you know, we're two hours now.
Yeah. So let's, let's just start going through this stuff and then when we get to the point where, because it is conversation that we just have.
Yes, conversation so that we can uh move forward.
All right, um if you don't mind carrying on.
Okay, so under application of procedural rules, should committee and commission procedures be combined into separate bylaws? So right now we have one bylaw and it separates out council meetings, committee of the whole, committee and commissions. So some municipalities have a committee and commission procedural bylaw and, and a council bylaw. Ours is all together, so I don't know. This is just a question, do you want to separate the two?
So where, where are we on the, the, this?
Uh we are on the top there.
Page four.
Twenty-eight or forty-two.
Okay.
Counselor Palmer?
Um so, so you're asking about the, would have a separate bylaw for commissions as opposed to um. Uh committee, committee. So from an academic perspective, I think they should be separate because they're very different. And I think there's often, there's usually confusion uh amongst counselors and the community for sure as to the difference of commissions. Um although most of our commissions are much different than a committee, but they are, they have separate powers essentially. Um and so I thought they, as a commission, they are governed by other bylaws.
So you're asking.
Sorry, Counselor Palmer, I'm asking about committee and commission procedures.
Oh, procedures.
Yes, so both of them together be removed. Leave council, council, and then committee and commission a separate bylaw.
Okay, so then I'll just backtrack on all that. Um basically the way our commissions are functioning, they're very little difference from committees.
Yeah.
So keep them the same.
So if we had a separate bylaw for committees and commissions and then a separate bylaw for council and committee of the whole. Did you guys get it figured out? Cause basically that's kind of how we're operating now, even if it's, is it not?
Uh they should have the same rules.
I see.
Committee of the whole and council.
And committees, to, to a certain, we'll, we'll end up talking about that later on on the agenda structure.
Okay, so do you need an answer on that right now or?
No, not necessarily.
Okay, let's move on then.
Um some best practices for closed meetings are listed in um the procedure bylaw. I think that it's more legislation um and doesn't need to be addressed specifically in codes of conduct. Conflict of interest, confidentiality. It's kind of a given, but that was listed in the guide as a best practice.
Any comments on that? You guys content with what we're doing now?
Um it's related and it's in the check marked areas. Um on um. From, from my perspective, we should be communicating as much as we possibly can regarding uh closed meetings. Uh in, in, I, I think Cindy might disagree with me on some of these items, but. To, if, if we are able to explain why we're going into camera to the, to the, to the world. Um I do not see that as a disadvantage. I think that's actually very, very healthy. Uh so for example, if we're going to have a, an in-camera discussion, notwithstanding whether it was appropriate or not. I would say, for example, uh uh on a public meeting, so I'm, I'm already restrained. I can't give the example because me went in camera for a specific item. That was, that I think could have reasonably been stated to the public, saying, we're going in to discuss this particular item. Um right now, I'm restrained from saying what that is because it was all done in camera. And I think it would have been healthier for us and healthier for the community to know what that was. And so I, ideally, and, and we can, you can move it on after this because it's going into a different area. Ideally, in my mind, if we say, okay, we're gonna go in, sometimes you just can't say anything. You know, it's a personnel issue, can't say a thing. If we're going in camera for a development to discuss a land thing. Uh or say for housing, the community housing or what, whatever the thing, then just tell the community. That's my perspective.
Sure. And, and, and so we may be able to do that in broad terms, right? Rather than specific. So, you know, you look at the, they keep saying the three Ls for in-camera land, labor and legal. Right? And so you look at that and go, okay, so we're going in camera. Well, that's general terms. But not everybody in the community knows that's those things that we're going to discuss in camera. So I don't disagree if we can uh basically make a statement, we're going in camera to discuss issues. Land or, or whenever. How do you guys feel? Let's go around the table, Counselor Orlando.
Well, our current policy now was added or changed. I mean, this is a decade ago, but it says on the agenda at the bottom, the reasons. Why it is in camera uh under the community chart, so the list is there already, so it'll say specifically why. Um I don't know if anyone else does that. I mean, I think it, 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 you know, if we're gonna say, oh, we're gonna talk about the affordable housing project. For example, but we're not gonna talk about, you know, a, a, a labor issue. Uh then it, it, it becomes a, a gray area of what do we and do we not? And I guess my question is, does anyone else do that? Any other municipality?
Or so do we all just go and basically say we're going in camera pursuant to section C, E, and K of the community chart?
Some identify the topics. Um not all, but if it's a, a special, then it. Usually identifies the topic, but in a broad sense.
Yeah, the reference to the legis, that's legislated, the. Item under that, the specifics is a discretionary item. I suspect most communities don't. Yeah.
So how do you guys feel, Counselor Chair?
Just for clarification. We could go, or you could say, you know, we're going in camera to talk about a legal issue and then state. The applicant?
No, you couldn't. There's, there's, there's other legislation that would restrict it.
There's a privacy policy.
I don't know, I need to go talk about this.
Yeah, I think it would be good to have it in a more digestible format for um. The community because yes, we have all of those references, but no one is gonna check what all of those letters reference directly to. Or if we're able to attach more digestible words to it, then we are at least explaining why we're going in camera in the broad sense without actually being specific.
Right. Counselor's statement.
Uh personally, I, I prefer to just keep it as is. I think pursuant to, to. How it's written right now, I think is really good because I think ultimately if we start providing information, I think through. You know, somebody could come, come up to you and, you know.
Trick you.
Kind of trick you and say, hey, like, I like conversation. And all of a sudden you feel like they have like that, that knowledge and you're like, oh, like. So I think, I think it's just pretty much like they're kind of like pursuant to the, you know, subset or whatever.
Yeah, um I'm, I'm in favor of uh being as open as possible. Uh but you know, there is potential for it to be uh really problematic and I would want to know how it works for other people. The other thing is we have items to report from in camera, so that's at the end of discussing something. We must remember to say, oh, we're gonna report this out uh if appropriate. We can always debate and discuss that. Um and as a suggestion, if our goal is to be um more transparent. Uh this, uh you know, items to report are only reflected on the minutes of the meeting. And I don't think anybody reads those except for everyone here of course, um uh prior to the, to the meeting. So um yeah, but maybe it could just be a communications effort on our part. But maybe it could just be a communications effort on our part, so if it's the kind of thing we want everyone to know, we could take a step to, after the meeting, to let everyone know we talked about it.
Further comment?
Nah, keep it going.
Okay.
Mayor Solz, I think probably I was a bit of a distraction there. Looks like we proceed, and then basically on the specific for us, I don't think there's any need to have any further specifics for in-camera conduct. I don't think it's necessary at this point.
All right, let's move on.
All right, so the next one is legislation that we need to provide written notice of committee meetings to each member. I am hoping that council will be amenable to amending the bylaw to specify email as a form of written notice. Because a former C A O required that staff used to do the meeting notice and put it in every counselor's mailbox. Council doesn't come to City Hall often enough, so all those notices would just get recycled.
Yeah, I think we're all on board with that. Notwithstanding some.
Yes.
For the trees.
Notwithstanding some of the challenges on the email on these iPads, at which I've talked about that before, I think we're all struggling with these iPad, because sometimes stuff gets missed. So, but I think, yeah, that's kind of an obvious change.
And then the next one, should details of remote access be included on the notice? So right now, we say that a meeting has been scheduled for this date in council chambers and electronic. We do not say on there, on our YouTube channel, you can follow it, and this is again just best practice. Do you want that included right in the council procedure bylaw, or have we communicated enough to the community that that's where they can watch the meetings as they're happening?
I would say.
I would say that very few people actually watch the YouTube video, so it seems unnecessary for us to.
Councilor Palmer?
Yeah, actually, there's not a lot of people, but people do do watch it. So for example, Tuesday's meeting, I think there was about thirty people that watched it, and I think, you know, possibly more people would watch it if they knew it was there. Might be just for a few seconds to see how boring it is, but.
I believe ten or fifteen of the thirty are staff.
They're very big twenty.
And the rest.
Councilor Chair, you come?
No, 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 I got nothing.
Yeah, I don't know.
Uh, nothing really, I mean, just, can we just say it's on YouTube?
Yes.
Relatively, just put that on the top of the form and never play that.
Yes.
Should be able to figure that out.
Counselor, stay there, stay in common. Okay, move on.
Okay, so under technology, some municipalities discuss loss of quorum for electronic participation. I think it's, I don't think it's required. If we lose quorum, the mayor can call for a recess until we regain quorum. But do you want it included in the bylaw?
Isn't it already written?
That's wrong.
No.
I don't think it's necessary. It's already covered under other legislation, so we can't change legislation, so it's going to be at the chairs, unless you want to specify how long, but that's at your discretion. If the quorum's gone, you can basically shut it down then.
Yeah, exactly, well, you know, sort of thing as we're watching, if it's electronic, I'm like, okay, you know. Usually I know what's happening, when it's traveling, that sort of thing, and we're going to go through that and go, okay, so we lost that person. Chances of getting them back in the next fifteen minutes or so, I don't know, so let's just shut it down.
All right, so agendas. So right now, we are required to say where agendas can be accessed. So right now, if someone came in and they wanted an agenda, we could print them a copy. It does not reference the fact that iCompass, they can go onto the website and access the agenda through iCompass. Do you want to include that, or are you good just with leaving it the way it is?
How often do you have anyone else?
Yeah, but just let you decide.
Include it, nobody knows where on our website to find it.
As a counselor, I can't even find it on our website, it's at the bottom. Yeah, I know, it took me way too long to figure that out.
And if you do find it, yeah, walk down low anyway.
Stop.
We crossed the line on safe word.
When we're putting out our newsletter, can we put links to the agendas in the email that goes out?
We could, except quite often the email goes out before the agenda is published.
Okay, links to iCompass?
They're already in there.
Perfect.
All right.
Okay, so back to agendas again, we do not have any specific on the agenda about notice of motions. And I think lately we've had a few with this council. I think it's probably a good idea to put a section in there on the process for bringing a notice of motion forward. Right now, what we have in there is that a notice of motion must be given to every council member at least twenty-four hours in advance in writing. Which.
For.
For any council meeting, including committee of the whole.
Councilor Orlando?
Clarification question, given to council by the person presenting those motions, or staff?
Either the person presenting or staff. Yeah, because the person presenting should let staff know in advance as well.
So just a question, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought this is already established that a notice of motion, or an agenda item, must be by noon on the Monday the week prior. For an agenda item.
Yes.
And the notice of motion is a twenty-four hour thing, but that doesn't automatically put it on the agenda.
That's right, a unanimous vote.
So in my mind, this is the procedure, the technical procedure is pretty clear as to how that's done, so I'm just. Is it not, or?
I guess it is, but I guess my thing is, does, do all of the council members know how to bring a notice of motion forward?
Can you clarify exactly what the procedure is right now?
So, so, so it's not written in our procedure bylaw.
Okay.
That's the problem, but right now the procedure is typically for the counselor that wants to bring it forward, to go to the corporate officer, review, help nail it down so that it's a clear, concise notice of motion. We bring it to council, council does a unanimous decision, or unanimous vote to put it on the agenda, which it could be discussed that day if it's unanimous.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you can put it, as long as it is a majority vote, it can go on the next council agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Good. So the problems, the problems of, so ultimately, we can get something put on the agenda as long as we're all in agreement, that's just an adjustment to the agenda. The problem with that is it can tend to hijack the important agenda stuff of people if we're just throwing stuff on. So I, and I think that's a whole intended for the agenda item that Monday prior. And I think that in general is very reasonable, that so that we have enough time to think through. So I know I'm talking about the notice of motion, which is a slightly separate item. Possibly having that clarification within the procedure bylaw, so long as it doesn't override our ability to make reasonable decisions if there's a timely matter. In the, probably, I don't think there's going to be a problem with this council, hypothetically, and in some councils, you have somebody, you know, a council member that's throwing something on there and throwing council off course on their priorities, and you don't want that to happen, you need to deal with it.
I feel we should formalize the procedure, and my input is that we need to have notice of motion there. Because if it's not there, then you don't have the ability to bring up topics. And adding to that, if you have a council member who has loads of notice of motion happening, that's a problem, you know, it shouldn't be that way, but you nevertheless need to preserve that right, so I feel it shouldn't be formalized.
On the table, anyone else? Councilor Palmer?
So just a question. So how would, what are you suggesting as, what's being suggested as the mechanism that gets integrated in the procedural bylaw? How would we functionally, so does the agenda item stay the same that Monday, at noon Monday before?
Yes.
And then how does this notice of motion get on the agenda?
So right now, there isn't a heading for notice of motion, so we kind of, if it stems from business arising, then we have a spot to put it. Otherwise, it doesn't really go anywhere, so I was hoping that we could have a heading, notice of motion. It likely won't be used very often, but it could be early in the agenda, and then the procedure is laid out in the procedure bylaw on how to get a notice of motion on an agenda.
So why don't we put it directly after where we put public hearings, before we do announcements from there. Put it in there, it's really on in the agenda, and it's also a public thing, so if we've got, you know, a public hearing or whatever. It's either just after that or just before that, in my mind, in that, Councilor Chair.
I'd just like to agree with Councilor Orlando, and then because you mentioned how the layout is on our agenda, is that going to be addressed?
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
And then if there's clarification. If a notice of motion is brought up to the committee of the whole, is that? That's a non-voting motion, correct?
Yeah, notice of motion typically doesn't vote a committee at the whole.
Would you do one?
Yeah.
Was that timing though? So part of the problem, sorry, with notice of motion is that if you want to discuss it that day, we also need to let staff prepare.
Yeah.
And if they're not ready to have a discussion and to respond to the notice of motion, then there's no point in getting it on that agenda.
So my understanding is that notice of motion has to be unanimous if it's put on that day's agenda, but future.
Future just needs to be carried.
Perfect. That's not for me.
All right, Councilor Palmer, for the home.
Yeah, so just, I guess intuitively, and certainly how I've done it, is tying it to that deadline so that there is a reasonable period of time for staff to prepare or to. But that's how I've utilized the notice of motion, so you have that full week, over a week and a half to do that, and that's, I think that in general is the best way. Because it's not sudden, there's time to think through, and then any urgent items can be dealt with anyway. So that's the, I guess, the first point. On the order of, on the agenda, one of the things that I note is the, those early items, so whether it's delegations or whatever, it can be distracting from the priorities. So if I put a controversial notice of motion, whatever it is, and it goes right early in the agenda. Then is that distracting us from the council business as a whole? So my, I would tend to favor having that further down on the agenda. It's just a point, it may not be an issue, like you say, it probably won't be utilized very often, but that, that's one of the things I note with councils, if there is. The most important thing should be discussed first, because I get tired.
Okay, well, we do talk about the order later on.
Okay.
So Mayor Solz, I need a washroom break if we're going to continue.
Yeah, let's take a washroom break, and then let's just go on for, maybe end it at quarter five, if you're okay with that.
Sure.
Councilor Palmer, could you mute?
Oh, you have to.
Please do.
Make an announcement that we're going to recess.
Ms. Russo, we're ready to resume.
One moment, Your Worship. We're ready, Your Worship.
All right, thank you, Ms. Russo. All right, Ms. Floyd.
All right, so now minutes. Right now, in, under committee and commissions, it states that minutes need to be presented to council at the next meeting date following committee and commission. It doesn't state specifically for council. I don't think it needs it in there, but it's up to you whether or not you want to include that. So typically, we take the minutes, they go to the next meeting.
I think it's an issue.
Okay, this next one is one that I would like to see in the procedure bylaw, where we implement a policy that allows for corporate.
we implement a policy that allows for corporate services to do fixes, to make minor corrections, to improvements. So typos or, you know, something, something of minor nature. There is no mechanism right now for us to do it, although we do do it.
I'm I'm okay with that because we're talking about changing a word or spelling something correctly or whatever, right? And uh, yeah. Why do you guys still?
One word can make a big difference.
No, no, it's if you said that word and then the word that got put.
It's interesting, man.
Is that what you're asking for?
It is, yes.
I I think I'll let it pass from my mind. I could drill in. We'll do over here sometime.
Okay, any other comments from anyone else? Counselor one?
Should those be um brought forward to council when those minor corrections are made? So you're talking about changing minutes from three months ago and?
Uh, well, kind of. So let's well, where's an example? For example, that on Tuesday, that recommendation that said um that council provide notice for a disposition of land for two years and then it had the five-year timeframe.
Yeah.
If we didn't notice that during the meeting, can we do a policy where we can just change it to five because the dates clearly stated five years?
I mean.
Counselor Leno and Counselor Church.
Just so to understand, is this approved? So some those, that was an approved agenda, not approved minutes.
Yes, so but if the minutes came forward um at the next meeting,
Mm-hmm.
nobody noticed that it said two.
Mm-hmm.
Building goes to put the ad in the paper and says, oh, no, it's two, it should be five.
Mm-hmm.
Is corporate services authorized to make that correction?
Would you let council know that this has been changed?
We could.
Because because
So that's just it.
I think I think yeah, you should let council know the changes because I certainly wouldn't want to read the minutes for like every last detail to see if like some number, and it could be like a, you know, a building by law where the number was changed from four to six years and that, but that's a consequential thing. So as long as we're notified that that there has been changes in their highlighting, I think that's fine.
Counselor. So I wasn't gonna weigh in, but just got some. So on that specific one, so the the five versus two. And uh, and so you're saying after it's adopted, we made that error, we didn't see it, then pick up on it. Um. And then it's done. So this is now in the procedure by law that essentially delegates
Yes.
a change of wording to a legal item? It's an in- it's injured. So what's the best practices recommendation?
Well, so it's to implement a policy, so not necessarily to include it in the procedure by law.
Yeah.
But refer to a policy established to allow for that.
So so from a from a legal perspective, when I'm, you know, thinking from that, I think probably it should come back to council because I can just see that being in front of the courts, but that's getting inserted, that picking kind of detail hypothetical, but it's that's that is the making of lawsuits. Um, especially if we get into developments and that kind of thing. I think I think the best practice would just get it corrected from um at the council level. And then there's not that legal risk going ahead on important things. Now, minor things?
Well, that's what this is for, just minor, like housekeeping.
Yeah, so if it's clarified from that perspective, that'd be fine because then that just makes practical sense. But if you're talking like that, five versus two, I think that actually if that if that had gone by, that that would have been corrected in the um the following meeting or a special meeting if necessary.
Here, Counselor Church.
Just for clarification, it was corrected in the meeting if there was an correction in the minutes following at the next meeting.
Yeah, if we just missed it, we just missed it. I don't know who picked up on it.
Uh. Was me, I just I read it. I was corrected.
Yeah, but anyway, it was it got picked up, so it was not a problem for that meeting. But if it had gone through, we didn't see that, and then you saw it after the fact. I I I think it should probably be corrected at the council level.
Counselor.
Um, I think it should come back if there are any adjustments made, just that we're aware of how those things are being edited and changed. Um, you know, we've seen committee of all meetings where we have five different minutes that we have to approve. I think if it's coming back with highlighting uh amendments to it, then it's easy for us to notice those and just vote that through and feel comfortable with that change.
Okay.
Counselor, we're alone?
Yeah, I I think we need to be aware of all the changes, no matter no matter what um uh and be highlighted. I I think in the past, there have been instances where things were changed and it was not minor and um um uh that uh like Counselor um Palmer said, kind of kind of can't re-wards.
Counselor Stig, any more comment?
No, thank you.
All right, could I give you any direction?
Uh, yeah, for sure.
All right.
So this is kind of the same thing with uh, oh, nope, sorry, I missed one. Under bylaws, there is no specification in the procedure by law that allows corporate services to consolidate bylaws. It's not specifically written down. So typically what we do if there's an amendment by law, we go in and we add all those amendments to the base by law. There is a clear note on the website that if you're accessing a consolidated by law, to make sure you go into City Hall and you get a certified copy of the individual by law that you're you're talking about. It's not addressed in the procedure by law, should it be?
Counselor Palmer?
Uh, I don't think it's necessary. It's consolidated and there's a qualifier. It is not a bylaw. It's a called consolidated by law, but it is not a bylaw. Because you have to go back to the original. I think it's very clear on the consolidate, every one, every one of our consolidated bylaws is very, very specific. And again, from a legal perspective, that's where it goes back to is through the actual bylaws. I don't think it's an issue. I think it's it's fine if you need a I I I don't see any problem, like I don't think there's any prohibition of the consolidated by law as it is right now, you know, from a procedural thing, you can do do this. I think it's a staff function. Perspective.
Any other comments?
What is staff's recommendation?
I don't think it needs to be in there either.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, the next one, I'm probably just going to skip by because I believe that um the making the minor fixes to bylaws would be, you would have the same ideas with the minutes.
Yeah.
Bring them forward.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, addressing council at meetings. So right now, we don't have a formal process to allow the public to address council at meetings. It could lengthen meetings. What do you you think that should be included? For example, there's someone sitting in the gallery that wants to make a comment.
Um, so I I want to weigh in because I I we've seen some changes within the CSRD. And we actually allow a public question and answer period near the end of the meeting. So, you know, we have this process where we go, you know, Ms. Russo, do we have any questions from the press? Um, we could say, is there anyone in the public that would has a question? And so how do you feel about that? And how do we word that sort of thing? So we're not going down a rabbit hole that's gonna keep us here for two hours on something that may not be applicable to what we just discussed in this room.
So your worship, the only problem I see there is if someone is watching online, they do not have access to ask a question.
Okay. And so um so Counselor Palmer, comment?
Um, yeah, I have some thoughts on this. It's something I've looked at for many years and uh certainly my view today is significantly different from when is that on the bureaucratic side of the fence? Um, the I I think it's a missing part in democracy of that ability for the public to interact at at that level. For certainty, it does need some control. So opening up to the floor during the uh especially during debate and stuff, I think it's a very dangerous place to go and would encourage that not to happen. Um. Uh, the what what I've seen over the years is um uh sometime, of course, we have our our delegation uh ability. Uh, and I think that's good. I think that's underutilized. I'd like to see that utilized more. I think there's a bit of a problem, though, at being at the beginning of the meeting because it can tend to distract and stretches out the length of the meeting. I have seen this, the that same kind of thing. So for example, in Summerland, they had at the end of the meeting that the public could address an item on the agenda, maximum two minutes, not ten minutes. Um. The problem with that was that it's too late. Councils already made their decision and it's very frustrating. So there's this, okay, you can air a complaint for two minutes, but we've already decided what we're going to do. Uh, so how we create an opportunity for people to make meaningful comments in that short period of time from the agenda uh uh being published and allowing that opportunity without it derailing the 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 council proceedings. Um, so it I don't know that it'll get addressed here. I'm just because you're asking the question. So the uh in in my mind, if there is a after after the the um uh the those procedural things, the bylaw adoption, the mayor's message, those key things, giving uh uh the public the opportunity to address an item on the agenda without grandstanding. So that's the challenge, though, that would be a big challenge for the chair. To me, that would, in the interests of democracy and openness, that would be better, but it's not, it's fraught with problems, I I think administratively. So I'm not really giving some guidance, but I think we are lacking in uh providing those opportunities um uh to the public in in that official way.
Uh, Counselor Church.
Yeah, debating here. Uh. I'm a fan of open debate and having community members weigh in. They have the opportunity to bring any issue to council that we can bring to the table. Um, we're all aware that there's certain members of our community that just engage in recreational outrage that you get in the microphone, they're gonna we know, we've seen what happens, we've seen in the public hearings. Yeah, uh, question is, would that potentially reopen the debate? Is there a chance for that?
And if it's after the fact, I don't think so.
It's after the fact, it would have to be reconsideration.
And and so there would be, you know, as Counselor Palmer has mentioned, it would be that frustration on more frustrating having it after the fact. I see what you're saying. Then that, uh, I'm not seeing that in what we're doing in the CSRD, but we're not addressing what's necessarily uh on the agenda today, but I'm hearing what you're saying with after the fact. Counselor Lucia.
Um, thanks. Uh, I think it would be good to have um a procedure and policy in place um as we get out of COVID and people are wanting to interact face to face. I think it would have to be done here in person. I think it would be challenging to have people electronically part of the meeting. Um, I do echo what Counselor Palmer's saying is having it before we've made decisions will actually make the community members feel that they're being heard and instead of just complaining about their the vote not going their way. Um, I think if we had in the same way that we do public hearings, that you have to sign up and there's uh schedule and a lot of timeframe that you're allowed to talk, just to kind of rein these things in and then having you as the chair being able to cut their time short if they are grandstanding or being disruptive or to us.
Yeah. Counselor.
Uh, uh, yes, I do support more participation. I think we uh would support democracy. I guess what I would want is this this policy proposal from staff that takes into account all of the potential pitfalls, all of those considerations, and lays it out into a clear procedure that uh accounts for the fact that um a lot of times it's people find, because they're passionate about one particular topic of something and might keyed up uh and not have experience with the meeting format. So it it needs to take into all of those things into account and also the concern that it would be uh something that uh people would grandstand and having gone through the uh vacation rental zoning uh hearings um way back in the day. I mean, that's a clear demonstration of how things just get off the the
Get off track.
Get off track real quick. And so we need to be mindful of all those things. But yeah, just if, you know, if the goal is somebody who's passionate about community and really wants to talk topic has their opportunity to come and say something.
Yeah, that's also stickers.
Um, yeah, just to echo what's already been said, I fully support with the public debate. Um, I think the timing at the beginning of the meeting, to me, I think it has more weight than having it at the end where and uh, yeah, that's about it.
So let's think about that.
For sure.
Talk about that. And so anything else that you actually want to uh get through before I?
We just have two more little things and then it's the agenda structure. So if we could just talk about so a lot of communities um have terms of reference for committee of the whole. We do not. Do you see value in it?
How is it differ from council?
Well, it's, right now, it doesn't really, other than it's more of an open dialogue, it's more discussion based. But that's not written down, I mean. Whereas every other committee of council has a terms of reference.
So would this council feel comfortable in terms of reference similar to what we've got for a council meeting? Uh, Counselor Palmer?
Yeah, so yeah, definitely. Um, it's an in- interesting dialogue and then how we use the committee of the whole over the last quite extensive period of time. Um. Last couple of terms, I would suggest, has been uh kind of ad hoc and more influenced by uh the administrator of the day and uh and where that's going. I know there was um going back to Alan Chabot's days. Uh, there was some structural changes of shifting from the committee structure to committee of the whole structure. Uh, and there's theory behind that, but uh the way right now is is interesting because it's evolving with this council and with uh Mr. Parliament here, it's evolving and he has ideas about that. So I think I think it's a sort of a dialogue, but there is ambiguity. And in my mind, a little bit of confusion, a stuff that seems like should have been finance committee.
Right.
Um, and then what, you know, what's going on committee of the whole? Why is it going there? Why is it not going directly to uh and and the use of committees? So I I think it's a kind of a, there's a bigger question. But I I I really think that Mr. Parliament needs to be in that discussion. Um, as I see how that's evolved, it seems apparent to me that he favors the committee of the whole uh process so that there's a little bit more interaction uh in a more comfortable setting. Um, so I think we need to understand that a little bit more and I'm certainly open to ideas from that are coming from staff and then how we how we do that better clarity of what's going to the committees because that seems to be inconsistent. What reports are coming from staff from to committees, committee of the whole or to council meeting uh uh in that that's probably the biggest concern that I have is there's inconsistency on on staff reports.
Good. Any other comments from counsel? Counselor Lynn?
I want to comment on the last one. Just I just wanted to two cents, sorry. Uh uh libel and defamation, we need to be mindful of that in the public comment and policy whatever comes forward. Um, so for example, we had an issue many years ago where a former mayor was libeled and not happy because it wasn't immediately addressed at the uh at the table. So just is the potential for a staff member to come in or a member of the public to come in and make statements that are visalists. And we need to address that because technically that's our responsibility. So just a good point, yeah.
Yeah, and then the last one correspondence, I believe, will come in the form of a policy or procedure. I don't think it needs to be necessarily included that how it's going to be received and accepted. We do have a correspondence section in the agenda, but in terms of the details around that, we'll nail that down and how it's disseminated through the council.
Okay.
All right. Uh, we do have a current policy that, like we used to get all kinds of letters from like the National Association of Butterflies saying we want a council resolution. Those are not put forward to us now. There used to be like piles of letters being sent and and council will be talking about like, okay, well.
The thing is about butterflies.
But there there was a statement or there is a policy or something that we don't do proclamations and I think that would that kind of cover that sort of stuff. So we're not dealing with that. So um.
So my question is, you guys, are you okay if, do you want a complete new council procedure by law? Or do you want amendments to reflect what we talked about today?
The deal.
I think new would be. I think new would be cleaner.
Okay, sure.
So my proposal is that in June, I come forward with a draft based on today's discussions. And at that time, we can go through the agenda structure and nail that down as well, so we don't need to continue this conversation too many times.
Great.
All right, let's do that. Now, uh, I need someone to make a motion to terminate. Counselor Stig, I have seconded by Counselor Leno, all in favor. Motion's carried. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Russo. We are done for the day.